Okay, so, welcome to the newly seated or re-seated board. This is the annual organization meeting, which we will hold and then adjourn and then immediately open up the regular meeting. And so, present is Ms. Pitko, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Jennifer Maxen-Cannelli, and Mr. Jeff Peterson. If I could have you all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Things have changed. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for So, we have a short agenda, but the first item is to elect a temporary chair. The recommended motion is that in accordance with the bylaws Superintendent Dr. Jones serve as temporary chairman secretary during the election of board officers. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mrs. Maxen-Cannelli? If there's no discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. The meeting is yours.
Thank you. That's so exciting. We'll start with the election of the Board of Education Chair. Nominations are open for chair. Ms. Maxen-Cannelli?
I nominate Mr. Dwyer for chair.
Mr. Dwyer, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Any other nominations for chair? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven-two. Congratulations, Mr. Dwyer. Nominations are open for vice chair.
I nominate Jennifer Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Ms. Jacobson, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Any other nominations for vice chair? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Devo yourself.
Nine-o. Congratulations, Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you.
Nominations are open for secretary. Ms. Pitko?
I nominate Jessica Gerber for secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Pitko. Ms. Gerber, do you accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations for secretary? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's nine-o. Congratulations, Ms. Gerber. And I don't think we need to change seats, so I will turn it to the chair.
Fair enough. We have two items on the organization agenda, as is normal. One is an initial discussion of the Board of Education bylaws. As I think each of you know, tonight's session is to let board members know if there's a subject or a section of the bylaws that you would like to propose a change to, and then just briefly describe it and what it is. In your packet that was in front of you, you have a one-page sheet that looks kind, looks like this. Somewhere in the front of the, not, not the packet mailed out to you, the one that was at the desk in front of you. I'll wait till everybody finds it.
Huh.
Everybody have it at the moment?
No, I don't have it. I don't think I have it.
Right? Everybody have it? Okay, so, the proper format, so board members know what they're voting on, is to have your proposal typed up in this format, which is essentially who is sponsoring it, what is the article number, the section number, type in the current text, and then using red to put in new words that you want to put in, and cross out, to take out the words that you want to cross out. If you do not have a color printer and need help to make it in this format, or if you're not a very good typist, then Meg is available, Mrs. Brown is available to help you. These are due by the Wednesday prior to the next meeting. So, the 12th is our next meeting, so whatever that Wednesday date is. If you need help typing them up, then get them to Mrs. Brown the Monday before, so she can have a chance to turn it around, send it back to you, make sure it's the way you want it, and it will be available for that Thursday's packet. So, with that as an explanation, are there any proposals that the board can anticipate will be coming forward? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, one idea that I wanted to put out, and I actually did make copies here, I don't have a color printer, but just to give board members a sense of what I am thinking of doing. This has to do with the bylaw regarding minutes. Back in, before 2013 and earlier, is the first paragraph that I have here, the old bylaw regarding minutes, and there were a couple of revisions that have taken place over the past few years, which really kind of seem to complicate matters more than they help things. So, my thought was to go back to the original bylaw as it was written and as really didn't have any controversy attached to it for many, many years. So, that's my thought, and I will certainly abide by this template that you've provided for us, but just to give people a sense of where it's been and where it's going, I hope that's my proposal.
Okay, so, you'll present this for the vote next meeting. Other thoughts or ideas that people wish to put forward? Mr. Asa?
Yes, I would like to bring under the bylaws Article II, Section IV for committees. I would like to recommend the formation of a finance subcommittee, and I will use this template to draw up the language for the addition of the committee. Looking back a number of years, a similar committee existed, so I'd like to recommend bringing it back in some form of that. Maybe not the exact wording, but I will draft something up.
Ms. Leeper?
Miss Duris and I were talking about the formation of that committee, so I'm happy to work with you on the language, if you want.
Other proposals that may be brought forward by board members? I'm gonna look at each one of you. Those two. Now, any board member can present any bylaw change at any time during the year, as long as it is given a proper notice, and so if between now and the Wednesday prior to our 12th meeting, a brilliant idea comes to you, as long as it is in the call of the meeting, it's an item that will be put on the agenda for consideration. And I'll say if the committee discussion doesn't get done between now and when you want to present it on the 12th, if you want to do it in a January meeting or a February meeting, it's at your call. Any other questions on bylaws at the moment? Okay, thank you. Also, in your packet is a list of the committee member and liaison assignments, again, the one that was at your table? Yeah. Looks like this.
No, it's not at your table.
It was, Meg, where, when, was this sent out?
It was at our meeting.
It was at their meeting, orientation for the new--
Oh, it was at the orientation session, sorry. So, the regular members have this committed to memory. I would ask all board members to send me an email that says what committees they would like to stay on, or join, or get off. And so, I'll collect all of the requests and try and make everybody's requests, you know, try and get, get most of you what you want to do. And if you could get that as soon as possible, especially if you are interested in CES, Parks and Rec, the Board of Health, those three entities, you are actually voting members of those entities, and they are always anxious to know who we've assigned early on. The rest, you're non-voting members, and so there's a little bit more time, but the sooner I can get this list put together, the better off, I think, for, for everybody is. Ms. Pitko?
Can you just let us know which ones are open? I don't know if that could be emailed to us.
Well, we'll get this list emailed out to you, okay? And I will say that what I've told, for the existing board members, what I've told the new board members is that I've not felt that they are to be restricted to what committees they look at based on what committees the departing board members were on. You know, that they have a right to look at any committee and express their interest in it. And so, you'll, many committees will have vacancies on them because we have lost four sitting board members, so there's holes here. But if you just look at the list, you'll see what names are no longer at this table, and those specifically are open. I have normally assigned myself to committees that nobody else chooses. So, even if you see my name there, if you have an interest in that committee, just let me know, and we'll see if we can't work it out. Any other questions on the committee and liaison assignments? I think that's it for the organization meeting, with no further business before the organization meeting. I need a motion for adjournment. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, with no discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, right? Okay. Thank you very much. I could just see a quick show of hands? One. Okay. So, I will ask for unanimous consent to move the approval of the Osborne Hill project to immediately follow public comment, so that our volunteers on that project can get home, but you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the data, student data report as well. If there's no objection, by unanimous consent, we'll move that item up immediately following public comment. So, student reports. Oh, that's right, two. We adjourned, so I have to, is everybody here? Ms. Pitko, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Jennifer Maxen-Cannelli, and Mr. Peterson are all in attendance, and we've had the pledge earlier with the first meeting, so we'll skip that. Now, on to student reports. Who wishes to go first?
Okay, I'll go first. So, at Ludlow, we recently just had our freshman forum, which is an assembly for freshmen about underage drinking, and then we had our senior spirit days the past couple weeks. We had five of them, they were very fun. And then we had our homecoming game on Thanksgiving, where we acknowledged the Roger Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ludlow High School alumni who were in attendance. And then coming up, we have World AIDS Day, where the SOS Club is going to bring in speakers, and they just want to kind of like address the issue and bring attention to that and prevent, they think that prevention is the best way, so just to bring attention to that. We also have our drama production coming up, I think this weekend. It's called Fake News. And then we have our blood drive also coming up. And then on December 5th, the FBLA, the Future Business Leaders of America Club, is hosting a career day, and we are having a ton of different professionals come in and talk about like what their careers like, and everything like that. And then, we also have the Bella Boutique coming up, which is a little boutique put on by our fashion students for holiday shopping. Do I get everything?
So, for the Bella Boutique, all of the, it's entirely student-run, so everything that the students learn, whether it's about merchandising, market research, and advertising, they've taken care of the entire thing. And this boutique's a really great opportunity for some people to get really personalized and unique gifts for the holidays, and half of the proceeds are going to Americare and Operation Hope.
Is that it from you?
Yeah.
Any questions for our students from Ludlow, Fairfield Ludlow? Board members are encouraged to ask very difficult questions. Seeing none, on to Fairfield Ward.
All right, so, on Ward's front, our entrepreneurship class just got into the Fairfield citizen because we have, I brought the product. We're selling blankets this year, which is kind of a big thing, because in the past we've only sold t-shirts, and so they've--
Pad up?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, it has a Fairfield like kind of logo on it, the lighthouse. It's a stadium blanket, so it's meant to be brought to games. It has like a nylon side here, so waterproof, and then on the other side, it is like a fleecy fabric. So, we actually sold out for the first year ever as a class, and we reordered, so if anybody's interested in purchasing, you can talk to me. They're $30, and portion of our profits are going to Operation Hope. On another note, we had our Halloween parade. All the seniors kind of storm around the courtyard in an organized fashion, of course, and the teachers, the teachers vote on the best individual, best group costume, most creative, best couples costume, and so it's a lot of fun. We do that in the morning, and it was a beautiful day for it. We also had a heroin opiate talk. The U.S. Attorney General for Connecticut, who is a Fairfield citizen, came and talked to us about heroin through the, what they call HEAT, the Heroin Education Action Team. So, it was a really cool talk. We had a bunch of speakers at that, and it was very interesting. Mr. Flynn, one of the social studies teachers at Ward, brought in Mike Petro and members of the RTM, also the planning zoning committees, to talk to his civics class, because a bunch of the students in there are showing a lot of interest in education and government, so he brought in speakers to that. I know you mentioned in the article that you were happy to see that two students actually came to one of the Board of Education meetings just out of pure interest, so it is really cool to see that teachers are inspiring us to go out of school and do stuff like that. And then, lastly, I know, Ms. Cannelli, you mentioned last time about, something about reaching out to alumni for surveys, so we talked about it. We thought the best way to do it would be to communicate through Facebook, because a lot of, I know our class and the classes below us have Facebook groups, and those don't like diminish or anything over time, you're still in them, so you can be able to communicate through either the class president of that year, and they can communicate through Facebook, Facebook Messenger. Most people have Facebook, so if you're gonna reach a broad audience, I think that would be your best bet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. On another note, Ward participated in the CAS program, where schools are donating to help in the hurricane relief effort in Florida, Texas, Puerto Rico. Our clubs donated $500, and Ward PTA matched that with 500 more dollars. As I'm sure Ludlow said earlier, there was a ninth-grade forum on drinking and risking behavior that had decent, pretty good attendance. And it was interesting, a former Ward student actually came as a speaker, so it was very interesting to get that point of view, very eye-opening. Mary Fulda, a Ward student, is joining the All-National Choir and will be performing at Disney's Coronado Springs Resort in Disney World. She was an overachiever with the Ward Music Department, so she made a perfect candidate for such a prestigious opportunity. On to sports. Fall is coming to a close, along with its sports, and winter's just starting up with practices right around the corner. Everyone's getting ready, excited for our season. However, Ward had a successful season in fall, sports. The boys' cross-country team had a fantastic season, as Senior Alex Mikarski got All-New England. Katie Salatin is an all-FCIAC girls swimmer, girls volleyball made states. Some of the girls went to the all-FCIAC game. Boys' soccer beat the fourth seed in a penalty kick win. Football ended on Thanksgiving Day with victory over Ludlow. Numerous all-FCIAC, all-state athletes went to events from Ward, and Lauren Tagney, a soccer athlete here at Ward, was nominated as the All-American Female Athlete for Fall.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our students from Fairfield Ward? Ms. Pitko?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to say that I agree with the Facebook comment. I graduated Fairfield High in 1996, and last year I helped through Facebook put our 20-year reunion together, and we have a group.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. As always, stay if you wish, or go if you wish, and thank you for being good students at our school system. Now, on to public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to come forward and present to the board on agenda topics, please do so and state your name and address. Your pleasure, standing or sitting?
Good evening. My name is Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street in Fairfield, and first I'd like to congratulate the new board, and thank you in advance for your service. It's, it's a thankless job, and I appreciate your, appreciate your being here. Seeing that the Operational Effectiveness Ad-Hoc Committee is on the agenda for tonight's meeting, and being a member of the committee, I wanted to throw my two cents into the discussion beforehand, and I saw there were three options on the table, one of which is to disband the committee. First, let me start by saying thank you for the opportunity to participate thus far. Yet, having said that, I'd like to go on and add that I think the committee, the way it's currently set up, is doomed to fail and be ineffective. And while I appreciate the thought process of trying to get a variety of perspectives and ideas about possible changes that would result in both financial and operational efficiencies in short and long-term windows, I don't think the way it's currently set up is the way to go about it. As Mr. Dwyer has stated on a number of occasions, the members' roles and who they represent is important to keep in mind. There were a number of people, both on the board and in the public at large, for instance, who thought I was representing the FEA. I was not only gratified, but also relieved to hear from the onset that that was not my role. I'm a teacher, a resident, and yes, a member of the FEA, and bring that combined perspective, but it would be unrealistic to expect me to put forth ideas that would speak for the FEA. And apparently, there were other members who were confused, like Mr. DeWitt from the Board of Finance, who learned after the meeting of his role that prompted his resignation, and as we know, there were two members of the Board of Ed who weren't clear of their roles either. Be that as it may, as you later go on to discuss how this committee will go forward or not, I would suggest first that it is a worthwhile venture to address structural change, and that there be a committee to explore the what, the how, the where, and the when ideas. However, I think the committee should be made up of a select few, four or five, from the Board of Ed only. The board should reach out and solicit input from people like myself, Mrs. Tribuco, Mr. Gerber, Mr. Kylie, Mr. DeWitt, and students, but they shouldn't not be serving on the committee, in my opinion. The committee should be able to take suggestions and ideas presented, and there have been quite a number already, and some I feel strongly about, and decide in a public forum which ones are worthy of further exploration and research. On another note, since I participated on the panel, frankly, I was disappointed with the Malone-McBrun's presentation at the last meeting. I thought the various scenarios presented didn't make much sense, given the assumptions they put forth at the outset with respect to projected enrollment and capacities at the elementary level. However, I do hope they did enough granular research we might be able to call on, so that redistricting, which will be likely sooner than we might think, can address the town's needs and include resolving the racial imbalance issue at McKinley. Finally, I'm still willing to give it a shot in the current format, if that's what the board decides to do. And no matter which way you go, as Mrs. Cannelli said at the onset, expect it to be messy, but I respectfully ask you to reconsider the approach and bring it inside the board's purview. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public at this time? Bearing none, thank you very much. So, by unanimous consent, we moved the approval of the Osborne Hill project up next. In the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept Osborne Hill Project 0510126 as complete. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, suggested by Ms. Pitko. So, the motion's on the table. Do you want to introduce the members of the building committee?
Yes, so, we have the Chair and Vice Chair of the Building Committee, Kim Marshall and Bill Dunn, so if you wanted to just come forward and--
Yeah, come on forward and make some opening comments, if you wish.
Good evening. I'm Kim Marshall, 180 Brookbend Road. I am the Chair of the Building Committee. We're here today to seek approval of our project. It's been a long ordeal since 2012. We've, we've had, you know, quite a process. We are complete as of the end of the school year, or excuse me, the end of the summer vacation, and we have at this, at this time, the majority of a, of additional funding that we had saw in 2015, we have the majority of the funding left over. We had requested it as a contingency, and it turned out that we didn't, didn't end up needing it. We had requested $340,000. We have $252,000 of that requested amount left. We, we have some photos of the security fencing that we installed at the walkway to complete the project, and, Bill, would you like to say anything about the principal? Or Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, basically, well--
Could you use the microphone for the--
Sorry, Mr. Dwyer. I guess what I'd like to do is I'd like to acknowledge the contribution of a group of individuals, and then one in particular first. A lot of people advocated for this project, however, the contributions that were most key in getting the project done were from parents, mostly mothers of children, who are now in college and in high school, people who pushed to improve the school, knowing that their, someone else's child would benefit from their efforts. The individual I'd like to acknowledge too is the school's principal, Mr. Frank Arnon. I met Mr. Arnon for the first time in August of 2012 at the OHSPCB Forum, which was several months before the Building Committee was formed. He was set to be the new principal of an elementary school with no gym, no library, and with the school's two largest bathrooms closed. With 500 students, I thought that this is gonna be a challenging situation for him. Later that same year, I asked my daughter, who was in third grade at the time, what she thought of her new principal. She said she liked him, and I asked her why, and she said, "It's because he knows what he's doing." She went on to tell me that he used, did I know that he used to be the principal for Holland Hill. There's no substitute for experience, and he, and his experience, made this very difficult situation work for all of us. That was the comments that I had as far as that was concerned. As far as the, Ms. Marshall explained, we finished the corridor, we finished the windows, and we finished renovating the gym a while back. The Board of Selectmen voted to renovate as opposed to knock down the gym and rebuild the gym. According to the calculations that we've done since our last meeting, that decision probably saved the town about a million dollars. The other things that I'd like to bring out is the fact that, as far as the project itself, whether, you know, if you, as Ms. Marshall alluded to, we asked for some money to replace the-- to replace the contingency. We still have money left over. If you take the difference between the two, and I think it was $2,013, were about 2.6% over budget. If you adjust to $2,015, when the bulk of the project was completed, we are 6.7% under budget. So we did the best we could with what we had available to us. As you've seen from the pictures, the walkway is enclosed. We went back and forth as far as what was the best way to enclose the walkway. We went back and forth with the funding for it, which was $70,000 in the original allocation given us. And this is, as you've seen from the pictures, I hope you've seen the results. So I guess...
So at this point, we are asking that the Board of Education consider our work as meeting the educational specifications, and we seek acceptance of the Osborne Hill project as being complete.
For new board members, as you may know, our responsibility is to create and approve a set of educational specifications, which the Building Committee, that is empaneled by the Town of Fairfield through the First Selectmen's Office, is their guidepost to build the building. And then they present to us that they have built the building and have met all of the Ed specs. And our staff are in agreement that the building does meet the Ed specs. And so we have to accept the building as having met the Ed specs, and that's what this motion is all about tonight. Questions from the board? Mr. Peterson?
I'd just like to make a quick comment and say thank you very much for your efforts. As an alumnus of Osborne Hill School, it's nice to see that you guys did an excellent job in very challenging circumstances, so I'd like to commend you for that.
Well, thank you very much.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelli?
Two points. First, I'd like to echo the thanks and also to Mrs. Gerber, who served on that committee. I don't think there was ever any idea that it was going to extend five years, as well as for the committee members. So thank you to all of them. And I was wondering if either Ms. Marshall or Mrs. Gerber, if you could just name off the rest of the committee members, just so we can publicly acknowledge. I don't know if any of them are here, but if you would be able to name the other committee members?
Suzie Cardona, Steve White, and Brett Bader.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll have Mrs. Gerber give the last word. The principal of Osborne Hill would have been here, but is under the weather with the flu. So no other questions, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say thank you very much to Kim and Bill. There were five members of this committee, but truly, these two were extraordinary in the amount of time and work that they put into this. And I really don't think this would have gotten done without you, so I appreciate that. And I also did want to just thank Sal Morbeto for being such a stalwart with this and all of the work that he had to put through. It was a very, very long process. I don't think anyone imagined it would be as long as it was and take as many twists and turns as it did. But, you know, just seeing that gym complete, having that portable gym gone, having all those windows and doors. Would it be nice to have had the completely enclosed walkway? Of course. But, you know, really, truly, considering where we started and where we finished, you know, I'm very, very grateful for all the work, and I know everyone at Osborne Hill is as well, so thank you.
This is a voting item, so the public may comment on a voting item. Any member of the public wish to come forward and comment on the approval of the Osborne Hill renovation? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. So now, back to the beginning of the agenda, where we have the presentation on the 2016-17 student data reports. I take it that we have a PowerPoint, and so therefore, we should go to the front of the class and... And I'll remind board members, if you could write your questions on the PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll ask all of them at the end of the presentation.
Yes. Turn it this way.
Hey, I know a guy.
I've had that before, it almost died.
We have to go back to the chalkboard, you know, when technology fails.
You're going to, in the limroff.
That's why I'm up here, to make sure.
We usually turn off when lights go on.
Yeah, I think so.
Unsubscribe and that thing fast.
Yeah, we usually turn off the...
Yeah, just check that thing works.
Why did you do that?
Do those.
Sounds pretty good.
Thanks.
Looks good.
Just to see her.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Cummings. I'm the Chief Academic Officer here in Fairfield. With me tonight is a cast of presenters. Two of our presenters, the doctors in our group, serve as the technical crew. Dr. Rasmussen and Dr. Pagluzin. We'll give more specific introductions as they each step forward to do their presentation. Also, this evening with us is Mr. Wakeman, Ms. Kehralla, Ms. Vigella, Mr. Chiopetta, Mr. Mancusi, our Director, Executive Director of Special Education, and Darlemine, our Executive Director of Innovation. We are going to present a series of slides tonight and a series of scenarios for you around the work that we use of instructional improvement in the district. Much of the work that you'll see tonight focuses on the use of data to inform and guide that work, but this is not a presentation about data results specifically. The board was given a number of those results a couple of meetings ago. Tonight's presentation is really about how we form and work with instructional improvement across the district. While the presenters tonight are those folks who work in central office, it is absolutely imperative that everyone listening in tonight understand that this work goes on across the district, in every classroom, in every building. It's led by the teachers, it's led by our principals, and it's led by our assistant principals, as well as those of us who work in central office. This is truly a team effort. Our objectives tonight, excuse me, and I will do my best not to read slides to you, but there are a couple that I do want to point out, and this is one of them. We are going to review our related district improvement plan, goals, and action steps as they relate specifically to tonight's presentation. We're going to communicate the guiding principles of instructional improvement. We're going to talk really about the work we do in, again, in central office and across the schools to improve instruction. We're going to talk about the instructional improvement process and highlight areas of growth as they relate to past and current actions, as well as highlight areas of continuing need as they relate to past and future actions. And again, we're going to present to you tonight about seven or eight scenarios. These are just small examples of the work going on throughout the district. As you listen in tonight and watch, these are just some questions to keep in mind and will guide the work in the presentations. What is the work of the Fairfield Public Schools instructional staff to continually improve student achievement? What have we learned from our areas of growth? What have we learned from our areas of continued need? And where do we need to work next, and what is needed to support growth in those areas? And as we present tonight, I know that a number of questions will occur to you, but if you could hold on those until we get to the end, it would be appreciated. As mentioned, these are some specific areas in the district improvement plan that relate to the work. As you know, the district improvement plan is far more vast than this. If only it were this, it would be nice. But it contains many more facets to the work than this. These are the areas specifically tonight that we're going to focus on in our conversation with you. I want to spend a little bit of time on this slide, because this is really the work that we do in the district to improve instruction. These are some guiding principles of instructional improvement. These are the absolutes of our work. These are the things we must do. And for those of you who've ever been in a classroom, have taught in a classroom, you understand that so much of the work of instruction is the instructional improvement cycle. And broken down to its simplest components, it's this idea that you plan, you put into place your plan, you monitor the effectiveness of your plan, and then you adjust the plan in response to students. That plan-do-monitor-adjust cycle. That essentially is what we've tried to capture here. So, and I will go over these. These are the guiding, again, the guiding principles of our instructional improvement. Begins with the fact that all students must learn to mastery content and skill levels. It's all students, and that was deliberately capitalized. All efforts must improve the lesson-specific interactions of student, teacher, content, and skills. We're continually working to focus on improvement, on the daily interaction, that classroom interaction, that hourly interaction between the teacher, the students in front of them, and the skills and content that they must teach. And we're going to try to break that out in a couple of slides to show you just how challenging that may be. Identify a finite but powerful pre-K-12 set of learning expectations and content and skills. The great struggle in education always is that there is an awful lot to teach and not enough time. We must focus, and particularly as a pre-K-12 system, we must focus on what is that finite set of things that kids must know and be able to do each year, at the end of June, at the end of each year, and at the course of their high school, or their 12 or 13 years in the Fairfield Public Schools. Collaboratively build curriculum and implementation guides that achieve the learning expectations and content and skills. These are the pieces that we work with our teachers and our principals and assistant principals to develop that support the instruction. Identify the needs and professional learning for all staff to support best practices in every school, every classroom. Without the backbone support of professional learning, we cannot improve instruction. If we can't improve our teachers, we can't improve the learning of kids. Monitor and adjust implementation and supports in response to identified areas of growth and continuing need. So when we see things growing well, how do we accelerate it? How do we expand it? When we see things that are not going so well, how do we fix it? How do we improve it? Now, if it was only this simple, but there are always continuous challenges to instructional improvement, and these are just some of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight. And you'll hear these issues raised in specifics through some of our examples tonight. So again, not all sailing is smooth. Some of the variability that we must contend with. One is simply the size of Fairfield. 11 elementary schools, three middle schools, three high school settings. The number of classrooms and teachers in play every time you implement something new, and again, to speaking to the needs of professional development, is a continual challenge. Just, again, the size of the district. Compounding the size of the district is the issues around staffing changes. We have a great benefit in that much of our staff retain year after year, but we do have staff who have to go out for different reasons during the course of the year. We have staff who retire. So we have to always contend with the fact, excuse me, that we have to bring new staff up to speed in order to best teach the students in front of them. And of course, we have needs of students and staff, and this can vary from the just illnesses that occur to people, to the challenges that some of our students bring with them every day to the classroom. Those are things that we have to continue with. And again, this is a human enterprise, so that is, those needs that kids and staff present to us are things we must contend with as we work to improve instruction. Again, there's always the challenge of budget priorities, and as you'll hear tonight, we always are contending with changes in state and national expectations. The most common example, or the most current example of that right now, is the Next Generation Science Standards, which we'll speak to in a little bit. So this slide just attempts to graphically describe how the improvement process actually works in education. The dotted line is our desired state. The flowing red line is our actual state. And so we're always looking to improve, and we are always improving, but contending with the variabilities, you tend to throw hiccups in the work and lead to that kind of sometimes fits and starts of the work going forward. This slide attempts to give you a graphic representation of one of these challenges of variability. During the course of a K-12 career, a student will have nearly 100 teachers. So when you think about the fact that over those 13 years that a child is in the school system, the teachers that they often are ending their careers with may not have even been in the school system when they began those careers. And the need for a school system to continually refresh itself in light of those changes, and staff alone, never mind the changes in curriculum standards, all those other things that occur over those years, is a great one. This slide is the number of lessons that a teacher will teach during the course of the year, 900. So when you think about this times this, you recognize the challenges that we face as we work to improve instruction across every classroom. This, simply put, is the work. So the overall headlines tonight that we would like you to think about as we present, that the prior district and school initiatives have demonstrated increased student achievement. Work still must be done. The use of data helps identify and guard our work. It is not the end in itself. And how do the examples presented this evening demonstrate the principles of instructional improvement? Just one last note about data before I yield the floor. This is some of the ways we're going to look at data tonight. You'll see this, not every presentation will present data in using all these fashions. But one of the things I want to point out, on the first bullet here, grade-to-grade level, this is looking at perhaps a single grade. You'll see some data for tonight, for example, about a grade-three data over successive years. So it'll be grade-three in 2015, grade-three in '16, grade-three in '17. The second bullet is about cohort data. Cohort data is following the same group of students over multiple years. So take the same group of grade-three students in 2015. Well, it's grade-four in 2016 and grade-five in 2017. So we will break data up for you tonight in both of those different approaches. Also, you're going to see us disaggregate some of the data tonight by populations. We're going to look at, particularly at our English learners sub-cohort. And we're going to look tonight, as well as some district comparative performances, Fairfield compared to other districts in the county and in the state. So having said that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mike. First I'll be getting into is looking at our secondary mathematics. Before I actually get started into this, I just want a quick little refresher lesson is, in Connecticut, similar to on the multiple states, we use the Smarter Balance Assessment. And this is going to be a lot of the data that you're going to see tonight. So for the Smarter Balance, this is a test in both language arts and mathematics in grades three through eight. And all this data will actually, we can be broken down, and we actually get into actually looking at some of this and moving forward. So some of the work that we actually have been doing over time, we actually get into the Smarter Balance by actually looking at the online reporting system. And when we get into the online reporting system, we're not just looking at overall data. We're actually, actually looking at even going farther, digging deeper, looking at the subscores, the claims. In mathematics, we specifically talk about, we look at concepts and procedures. We look at targets, which are grade-specific. And actually, then, from there, we actually help develop our various areas of need, just as Mike illustrated, actually looking at, one of that initial steps is, let's start looking at where are we doing well, and actually where we have areas where we can improve. And one of the things that we actually talked about, we actually got into, is looking at our concepts and procedure scores. And one of the things we actually then was working with teacher teams and providing interventions. Specifically, we noticed that we wanted to help students maintain skills over time that we have learned within each grade level specific within our curricula. And then we use, that was our research... And this is going to be a lot of the data that you're going to see tonight. So, for the Smarter Balance, this is a test in both language arts and mathematics in grades three through eight. And all this data will actually, we can be broken down, and we actually get into actually looking at some of this and looking, moving forward. So some of the work that we actually have been doing over time, we actually get into the Smarter Balance by actually looking at the online reporting system. And when we get into the online reporting system, we're not just looking at overall data. We're actually, actually looking at even going farther, digging deeper, looking at the subscores, the claims. In mathematics, we specifically talk about, we look at concepts and procedures. We look at targets, which are grade-specific. And actually, then, from there, we actually help develop our various areas of need, just as Mike illustrated, actually looking at, as one of that initial step is, let's start looking at where are we doing well, and actually where we have areas where we can improve. And one of the things that we actually talked about, we actually got into is looking at our concepts and procedure scores. And one of the things we actually then was working with teacher teams and providing interventions. Specifically, we noticed that we wanted to help students maintain skills over time that we have learned within the, each grade level specific within our curricula. And then we use, that was our research-based strategy, using a distributive practice is always cycling back to think about it, keep on practicing those skills, because really, mastery comes, of skills comes over time. So we did a lot of instructional strategies that kind of helped keep cycling back, because we wanted to do it not to master for a unit, we wanted to keep on practicing over time. And really kind of getting into that is kind of going into is, for example, before I kind of talk about this, is, I'm going to actually do my little laser pointer right here. These levels, this is going to be, you'll see this multiple times overnight, tonight. Level four, as you'll see, is the yellow up here at the top. That is your exceeding ratings for the Smarter Balance. The gray, level three, that is your meeting. Level two, that is your approaching, and level one is below standard, or not meeting. So you'll see this similar type of graph over and over and over tonight. So the nice thing here is an example of grade eight. So this is, again, this is a grade-to-grade analysis. So this is the same grade, different students here. So if you actually look at over time here, we actually, again, within grade eight, we actually saw a nice growth of students actually meeting our target, in terms of meeting the benchmark on the Smarter Balance. Similarly, on the bottom, we actually saw a reduction in terms of the number of students actually below standard. So again, we're happy with that. And that kind of shows that the various actions that the teachers put in place, and also professional development that actually went into it, actually helping the various learning in the classroom. I'll go on to this next slide. Now, this is a cohort. Now, again, as Mr. Cummings actually illustrated, this is the same group of kids, same kids, different grade. So again, so starting in sixth grade in 2015, moving into seventh grade 2016, and eighth grade in 2016. Again, we're seeing growth, again, from number of students meeting the benchmark. The one concern that we did kind of notice, we did see an uptick of the students meeting benchmarks. So again, that's something that we, based off of our initial analysis, is something that we are continuing to work on. So kind of moving forward here is, we're actually looking to, and you'll see this theme moving through, is looking to help build the teacher capacity of supporting struggling learners. And using these various, we'll continue to use various research-based approaches to not only support the teachers, but also support the administrators, the school-based administrators, and I'll help monitoring their effectiveness. From here, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wakeman, who's going to briefly talk about elementary mathematics.
Thank you, Dr. Rasmussen. I'm Walter Wakeman, the Director of Elementary, Mathematics, Science, and Enrichment. I would like to just share a couple of examples, school-specific. I'm going to be sharing examples of two schools, specific grade levels, as an example of the guiding principles in action. And thank you for coming to the presentation. My apologies here. Hold on, how fast can you sight-read? All right. There we go. Let's try it one more time. It is sensitive. Okay, thank you very much. So, again, with the guiding principles, the plan-do-monitor and adjust. There's a lot of work that was done with the teachers and the schools. We used the SBA, the Smarter Balance Assessment data. It's going to be shared tonight on the examples, but there's a lot more data that is used to help make decisions about instructional decisions. The work that was involved was providing consistent professional development in these examples. And it was often embedded in during the classroom day, where teachers had opportunities to visit each other's, watch each other's instructional practice. They had opportunities to debrief and share challenges, as well as effective best practices. And they were also able to observe some model lessons, or demonstration lessons, I should say, and debrief those as well. And they also had consultant visits, and the math-science teacher and the principal as well in the building were integral and important and a part of this process. And the math-science teacher also became a coach in this process, working with the teachers as they went through this. Some of the data we talked about, or I mentioned earlier, is about looking specifically at individual student work and planning. The important part of looking at the student work is the specific planning that is involved, the intentional planning and instruction that teachers do. This, again, going back to the guiding principles, is for all students. And looking at how in the mainstream classroom, we're addressing the needs of all students within the context of a lesson on a day-to-day basis. So teachers had opportunities to share some of their frustrations and, as well as their successes, and that was a powerful component of this work. So this is an example of grade three. And again, this is an example of different groups of students from 2015 to 2016 to 2017. I just want to point out, if you'll notice, in 2015, 40% of the students were at the meeting and exceeding level. You'll also notice the percentage of students who are at the levels one and two. The teachers engaged in a lot of this work, and you'll see a significant increase. And I just want to put this in context with the rest of the district. The 2015 school year, there were 25 percentage points below the district average. The following year, they were three percentage points above. And the 2017 year, these teachers actually engaged in a different focus, but you can see that the work is sustained. And again, this is with a different group of students, and you'll still see a decrease in the students in the level one. Again, this speaks to continued work that needs to be done in the district. This next group is actually a group of students, it's the same group of students from grade three into grade four. And I'll share with you, again, these are students that were 13 percentage points below the district average. And this is a different school, by the way. And the teachers were involved intensely in this work, and with follow-through with the principal, and coaching with the math-science teacher, as well as some coaching, and looking at student work and providing guidance. And you'll see that the following year, they were seven percentage points above the district average there. You'll also see a significant drop in the students at the lower end. So again, we're continuing to work on this. And actually, this current school year, the math-science teacher is continuing this work in other grade levels, and so this is part of the work that we're going to be doing as we move forward. So as we move forward, we're going to continue to respond to individual student needs. Again, this was a whole-class examples, whole-grade-level examples, and building the capacity of teachers to address and be responsive to individual students. And we'll continue to implement the research-based instructional strategies that, and effective practices that we, that teachers have begun to share as we move forward in this process. I also wanted to mention that the math-science teachers have also been very supportive in providing instructional interventions to some students as part of this process. It's part of the big picture. So there are a lot of people involved, and it's a very powerful piece of the professional development as teachers move forward in the process. This time, I'd like to pass the baton to Patrice Fajella.
I hope I don't do the same thing that Walter did. I'm not quite, oops. Okay, so I did something different than what Walter did. I'm not quite as tall as the previous presenter, so I'm going to hold the mic and then put it back. Good evening, I'm Patrice Fajella. I'm the Director of K-12 STEAM and 612 SCIENCE. Welcome to the new board members who are here tonight for the first time. I'm going to give you another example of that plan-do-monitor-adjust cycle that Mr. Cummings spoke about. One of the unique things about science in the state of Connecticut, for those of you who are new, is that it is not tested every year. It is only tested three times, in grade five, grade eight, and now it will be in grade 11. So we don't have data from every year, grades three through eight. We, as a group, looked at our data, and "we" meaning the teachers and I and the building administrators, and identified that although our students are performing well, there was one area that we felt that they were not doing as well as we believed they could, and that was on the content knowledge portion of our state assessment, moving from grade eight to grade 10. So we dug deeper into that data and identified that there's a particular strand called cell chemistry and biotechnology that's focused on in our biology courses, where our students were not performing as well as they were on other strands of the test. Again, I, along with the building administrators, provided professional development to the teachers on specific instructional and assessment strategies around that strand and around general problem-solving. Because really, that is the focus of science, is teaching students to take information, dissect it, solve a problem with it. So we worked with teacher teams to examine, excuse me, some of our local assessment data. We provided interventions for students who were still struggling based on those results. I'm going to show you some data from grade five, grade eight, and grade 10. Again, this is different students over the course of time. So you can see our grade-five students in 2015, 2016, and 2017, as compared to the state performance. And our students are doing well. And we did see improvement as compared to the state in grade five over these three years. Here's our grade-eight data. And again, you can see our performance compared to the state. The blue is us, and the orange is the state, if you can't see the little key below. And again, we went from 18% above the state average to 24% above the state average. I'm going to back up just a minute, because I'm going to highlight this. You can see in grade five, in 2017, we were 22 percentage points above the state. In grade eight, we were 24 percentage points above the state. And then here's our grade 10, 2015 to 2017. Pretty consistent performance in 2015 and 2016. In 2017, the entire state saw a drop in their science CAPT scores, the Connecticut Academic Performance Test. And part of that is because the test was normed differently than it has been in the past. Those of you who are familiar with the test, for the very first time, it was an online test instead of a paper and pencil test, so it was normed somewhat differently. And even despite that, we saw an improvement to 26% better than the state average. So we were pleased that we did see some gain against our state partners. One of the things that I do want to mention here is, the test data that you're looking at is a legacy test. We will no longer be administering the CMT or the CAP test. This year, we will administer a next-generation science standards field test. We will receive no student performance data from that test. So next year, when I'm up here, I will have no graphs to show you. However, the following year, we should receive data from that test. One of the other things I did want to mention, you know, I work with a phenomenal team of building administrators and teachers, one of the finest. I've worked in five other school districts, one of the finest I've ever worked with in my career, and I'm not going to say how long that is. But in 2017, our 10th graders were tied for 10th in the state of Connecticut in their performance. We're very proud of that. And that is in large part due to the work that the teachers engaged in in their professional development, that they then took back to their classrooms and worked with their students. So I do want to compliment them and their building administrators on that work. Sorry. Just a couple of other comparisons for your benefit. This is our 2017 performance against some of our neighboring districts. You'll see in the title, it says DURG-A. For those of you who are new to the jargon, DURG is District Reference Group. It is a category that the state uses to group-like districts in socioeconomic status and other things. They go A through, I want to say H, or perhaps I. But we are a District B group. This is where we perform against our District A partners. So we're right in the middle, which we're quite proud of. And this is a longer list. DURG-B is a much bigger group. This is where we fare in District, in the DURG-B list. You can see there are several ties there. And we are looking at some of those districts that are performing better than us, even though this is a legacy test, you know, it would be interesting to find out what those districts are doing that is different than what we have been doing in the past. So moving forward, as Mr. Cummings alluded to, I'll be coming back. You'll see me again in April, bringing, with Walter, bringing forward the pre-K-12 revised science curriculum that will be aligned to the next-generation science standards. We have identified an area of growth for us as the science and engineering practices that are encompassed in those. That is something new for all science teachers across the state, and we will be engaged in some significant professional development for our teachers and administrators on the transition to these new standards and what those mean for students. With that, I'm going to introduce my colleague, Dr. Greg Pugliese, who's going to talk to you about program evaluation. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Greg Pugliese. I'm the Director of Social Studies and Student-Centered Learning. I'll talk a little bit about our process of program evaluation and highlight some of our AP scores along the way as well. As earlier presenters have stated, our curricula and our programs are being continuously evaluated, updated, and improved. All of you are familiar with the formal curriculum revision cycle, which Patrice just alluded to, and I will talk about that and even show in a minute. But between those formal revisions, we are constantly using all kinds of data, statistical data such as what we're showing tonight, but also various types of qualitative data from classroom observations, from feedback from our teachers, from our students, and from our families as well. Our goal, of course, is always to improve student learning and to adapt to changing standards, laws, and community expectations. So over the next few slides, I will, again, highlight some of our advanced placement data from the high schools to illustrate this process. But to be clear, this process is done for all courses, at all programs, at all levels in our district, not simply for AP courses. So to highlight some of the AP data, this slide shows a five-year summary of AP scores in our district. We currently offer 22 advanced placement courses in our high school. This data comes directly from the College Board. The column titled "Total AP Students" on the left represents how many unique Fairfield students took at least one AP exam, not necessarily the total enrollment of our AP courses. Success on an AP exam is defined as a score of three or higher. That's out of a possible five. A three or better represents the score point that research finds predictive of college success. As you can see, between the years 2012, between the 2012-13 school year and this past school year, we have increased the total number of students taking AP exams from 600 to 672. And the total number of exams given from 1,196 to 1,361, that's an increase of 165. And we have done that while maintaining a very high success rate at around 90%, or even slightly over. This slide illustrates how Fairfield's high school students do on advanced placement exams in comparison to the state of Connecticut and to the global population taking exams. The blue bars represent Fairfield's numbers, the orange bars represent the state of Connecticut, and the gray bars represent the global population. So again, over the past five years, Fairfield students have maintained a success rate around 90%, while the state of Connecticut hovers between 72 and 75. And the total, the global success rate of all students taking exams has been consistent around 60% over those five years. Earlier in the presentation, we highlighted some of the challenges to continuous instructional improvement that we face. And one of these challenges is adapting to changing state and national expectations and requirements. This includes adapting to changes in AP courses and exams brought about by College Board. So as courses and exams are redesigned based on new research and standards, teachers need to be trained and updated on new requirements, and curricula and resources adapted to meet those changes as well. So this slide, this slide shows which courses and exams have been redesigned over the past several years. And one course is up to be redesigned for next school year, that's the AP-US Government and Politics course. So this slide highlights an AP course that was recently implemented in our high schools during the 2014-15 school year. As you can see, we were giving AP exams in psychology prior to implementing the actual course, and students were performing relatively well. But when we implemented the course, teachers But when we implemented the course, teachers were trained, we went through the AP audit, teachers collaboratively planned, and since then, we have continuously been improving our instruction and our resources. So we have increased the number of students in AP Psychology from 76 the first year to 180 during this school year, while, again, maintaining high levels of success on the AP exam. So moving forward, we continue to adapt to changing standards and expectations, and will continue professional learning on the analysis of data to improve the functioning of all data teams and collaborative planning teams, always, again, with the goal of improving student learning in all areas. We are currently working on a revised high school graduation requirements, and we have recently updated the curriculum renewal cycle. We also continue to provide professional development on changing expectations, and continue to communicate our progress to the board and to the community overall as well. So here's our revised curriculum revision cycle. As Patrice mentioned before, later this school year, the board will hear curriculum revision presentations in science and also in pre-K-5 music, at the top of the slide there. You will also be hearing status updates in technology education and in library media later this year. And next school year, you'll be hearing curriculum revision presentation in 612 music, and status updates in business and in world language. So now, I will pass on to Mr. Chiapetta, who will discuss secondary language arts.
I'm John Chiapetta. I'm the Director of Secondary Literacy and Learning. And tonight, what I'm going to do is share some middle school data with you specifically. We're going to look at some smarter balanced assessment data for grade eight. And one of the reasons we're going to be sharing grade eight data with you is that the grade eight is something that we've been looking at as we have focused on the transition years between grade eight and grade nine and making sure that our students are well-prepared for the rigors of high school. One thing that you're going to see is that our eighth graders have shown consistent performance over the last three years in the smarter balanced assessment. And this is a real testament to the strength of our curriculum and the very, very hard work of both teachers and building administrators. Similar to what Dr. Rasmussen mentioned with the math teachers, one of the things that our teachers in grade eight have done is they've gone and looked at specifically how students have done in various skill strands when it comes to the performance on the smarter balanced. And specifically, what they noticed was that there was one area that our students continually underperformed in. And believe it or not, as parents, you might be not so surprised to know that it was the listening aspect of the test that our students weren't performing as well on as they could have. And that actually is a new thing for students, simply because the state of Connecticut never tested or assessed listening to text as an actual skill before the smarter balanced test. In states like New York, and the region's had it always been a component, but that was very, very new for Connecticut. So what the teachers did was, they took a look at that data and then thought about the different ways that they could implement instructional activities and various assessments to have kids be better prepared for the kinds of listening assessments that'd be done, they would face on the smarter balanced. Additionally, we also noticed that there were some areas of improvement in reading comprehension that we could look at, specifically looking at the kinds of questions and the ways in which comprehension questions were asked, and then we replicated those kinds of questions in the classroom. So this, in particular, shows our achievement in eighth grade. Again, these are different students over three years. So you can see that there's been fairly consistent performance from 2015 to 2017. We've actually improved by five percentage points. Similarly, at the same time, too, the percentage in the number of students at the very lowest level has decreased as well. One of the other ways that we look at data, you've seen this before, is we make some comparisons to how we're doing against other schools in the region. And one of the things that we can look at here is that we have seen a 6% increase in achievement of students meeting, excuse me, meeting or exceeding benchmark on the smarter balanced assessment, where some of our peers in the region have seen a significant decrease. In 2017 in particular, our eighth graders outperformed such districts as Westport, Weston, Ridgefield, and Wilton, but we almost got to Greenwich. Moving forward in the secondary language arts, one of the things that we continue to look at is utilize our SRBI process, and you're going to hear a little bit more about that later on in the evening, to identify early intervention for students in reading and writing who need a little more extra support in the general education classroom. We do continue to work with teachers to analyze granular data on the smarter balanced assessment to continue to look at to see if our efforts on those very specific skill strands are working. And that also comes along with continued professional development for teachers to help meet the needs of all students. And now Pamela Chirala is going to talk a little bit about data on the SBA in elementary language arts.
I'm Pamela Chirala, the Director of Primary Literacy and Learning, working with the EL department and SRBI in the elementary school. And I represent an incredible team of principals, language arts specialists, who work in classrooms and with teachers every day in our schools, and I'm proud to represent their work here with you today. So the work of elementary language arts has shown over the years that we have steady growth when our students move through grades three to five, which reflects strengths in our grade four to five core curriculum, and the power of our peer coaching model in grades four and five, and the work of our language arts specialists to coach teachers and work directly with students in interventions in grades three to five. We also have focused in the last year on streamlining our data collection tools and processes, and our IT department has delivered us systems and tools that allow us to look at various student data in real time to act quickly on student data and to see patterns that inform our instruction. What we're going to look at here is a cohort, so these are the same students moving through the grade levels. And we can see that we have steady gains in the students who are meeting and exceeding as they move from grade three to grade five across the years. I'm going to look a little bit now at grade three, where you see that our entry data is consistent, looking at about 67% to 68% over the years. So this is an area of concern for us in looking at how we could increase our entry-level data into the testing years of the SBA. So one of the things that we looked at in order to determine how we're doing is looking at some of our regional partners. And we can see that while our scores have been consistent across the years, some of our neighbors, some of our high-performing districts have seen a drop in their scores. At the same time, we see that some of their scores have strength, and we have been reaching out to regional partners to talk about and collaborate on what they are doing in their work to achieve these numbers in grade three. We're finding that as we move forward, a focus on SRBI, which is scientifically research-based intervention in Connecticut. On the national stage, it's called RTI, or Response to Intervention. And these districts that we're looking at and working with have strong SRBI processes in place that we are looking to learn more from. Basically, an SRBI system universally screens students and gives extra help to students who need it. We are also looking to continue to work with our K-2 teachers with professional development in the area of phonics and reading foundations. When the Common Core standards came in and we adjusted our reading and writing curriculum to meet those standards, there was a strong shift in focus to critical thinking and higher-level comprehension skills. We're looking at revisiting our foundations work as we look at differentiating instruction and supporting all students in elementary school. We will also continue our work with some consultants for professional development of our coaches and teachers in the areas of teaching and coaching language arts. And we will continue the work that we've started that we're so proud of, of integrating social studies, library and media, and the language arts curriculum, so that instruction of digital reading and writing is happening more consistently across the K-5 spectrum. And that is work that started two years ago and continues as we work more and more with digital reading and writing in our schools. I'm now going to turn this over to Rob Mancusi, who is our Executive Director of Special Education.
Thank you, Pamela. I'm your proud Executive Director of Special Education. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work in Fairfield, to meet such wonderful families and students in my three months here. So tonight, what we're going to do, in terms of speaking about special education, we're going to focus on grade three, early literacy or reading. This continues to be a focus of the state of Connecticut. We all know what the research says. If we send kids beyond grade three who are at-risk readers, they continue to struggle throughout their educational careers. So, as I said, we will continue to focus on ongoing improvement of the district's SRBI process or procedures. We work with our general ed colleagues and our special ed colleagues. In this effort, we will continue to provide appropriate professional development opportunities to all our special education staff members, continue collaboration between general education and special education staff. It's been one of my brightest surprises here, or I don't know if surprise is the right word, but general ed staff is very welcoming and collaborative with special ed staff in Fairfield. And we will continue to analyze service delivery models to ensure most appropriate programming for students with disabilities within the least restricted environment. This slide is comparing our students with disabilities, grade three ELASBA results from 1617 compared to the state. When we look at how many students met or exceeded standard, we're above 23% of our students with disabilities who took this grade three EL test, which was about 72 students in total. We outperformed the state, who is just over 15%. When we compare ourselves to, that just highlights your percentages who meet or exceed standard. When we look at our results compared to Fairfield, compared to Greenwich, Trumbull, and West Hartford, which are DURG-B districts like ourselves, and Westport, which is a DURG-A district, which we often, you know, we often looked to, to see how we perform relative to Westport. In terms of grade three ELA performance on the SBA last year, we performed, as I said, exceeded or met standard, just over 23% of our students. We outperformed Westport in that area. They had NA. They had a total of only 33 students who took the grade three ELASBA last year, so they were not able to report three or four, because, as you can see, in Level 1 or Level 2, 78% plus of their students performed at that level. And then, we were just below West Hartford in our performance. This looks at, you know, the student cohort, which is in grade six this year over the three-year period. It highlights that our efforts are having some positive impact in terms, the percentage of students with disabilities meeting or exceeding standard. It moved from 25.6 to 32.5 between third grade and fifth grade. A lot of work has been done in the special education department. There is a reading plan that is in year two of implementation and providing staff with evidence-based reading strategies to improve at-risk readers' performance in this area. So moving forward, we will continue to strengthen the capacity of special education and related services staff on the administration of comprehensive literacy assessments to inform targeted instruction in this area. This continues to be a major focus across the state for districts, and we will continue to strengthen our analysis and interpretation of student progress monitoring data on IEP goals and objectives. To promote mastery of those IEP goals and objectives, enter informed targeted instruction. I will now pass this back to Mr. Chiapetta.
One of the departments that I get to work with as the Director of Secondary Literacy and Learning is the Secondary, Middle School, and High School English Learner Department, and that's a group of teachers who work with some students that we don't really come to the board to talk to you about very much, and that's what I'm going to do tonight, is share some demographic data as to this group of students. Currently in our schools, across K through 12, there are students who come to us from 52 different countries, literally across the world. Of those 52, there are 28 different languages that are spoken, and included among these languages are regional dialects of both Hindi and Arabic. As you might imagine, this incredible diversity of language experiences represents a unique challenge for all of our staff, but specifically our EL staff and building administrators. This slide represents the increase in student population of English learners from 2013-14 to 2017-18. As you can see, we've seen a 47 student increase, or a 22% increase over that time. But you need to understand that this is not necessarily a fixed group of students by any means. This is the EL population, English learner population is one of the more transient groups, demographic groups in the district. For example, over the past year, although we added only a net of 10, 52 students were new enrollees, while 42 students left the district. This is a fairly common practice over time. And it's also interesting to note that, as are the overall population of the district, begins to decrease slowly, our percentage of enrolled students who are unidentified as English learners is on the increase. All English learners take a standardized assessment once per year from sometime around February or March. It's called the Lost Links Test. Lost Links stands for the Language Assessment System, which is basically an English-language proficiency test. Student scores correspond to five proficiency levels, but the one I wanted to start with you and show you tonight is that 44% of our students across K through 12, they scored in the lowest two proficiency scales. These are the students who have just a basic grasp of English, they have a limited understanding of the language, and therefore, a limited ability to use the language in the classroom. 56% of our English learners scored a proficiency level of three or four. Although these are higher-performing students, they still need to be supported in general education/content area classes, and clearly, these students are unique, but they are an important challenge for all of our teachers, because as you can see, even though a Level 4 student is labeled as proficient, they're proficient in using language on a day-to-day basis for communication, not necessarily facile with content area vocabulary, or being able to follow the content at all. This slide represents the distribution of how students have scored across levels. And as you can see, the largest percentage of our EL students are in Fairfield are identified as Level 3, and that's proficient. These Level 3 students are considered only proficient in day-to-day communication. They still need significant amount of support to be successful in the rigors of content area classes. Also, it's interesting to note that the largest number of ELs are in our elementary schools, and therefore, we can expect that this group will need continued support over a longer period of time. Moving forward with our English learners, one of the things that we're considering is a newcomer academy for our Level 1s and Level 2s. Essentially, a newcomer academy would be a specific place where these students would come regardless of where their home school might be, because right now, they're spread out across the district, and we think it might be a better way to meet the needs of these students and maximize the amount, the kind of resources that we have. We also know that our English learners have complex social and psychological needs. Not only are these students coming to us from very, very different cultural backgrounds, traditions, and experiences, but some of our students have faced significant, significant traumatic experience and come to us from places like Syria, Egypt, and Brazil. For some of our English learners, there have been significant gaps or interruptions in their formal education, and for some of these students, they've had little to no formal education at all. These students arrive at our school with very limited literacy skills in either their native language or in English. And we also know that we need to support the families and provide professional learning for general education teachers to best need and support our English learners. Now Darla Minor is going to talk to you a little bit about our STAR assessments in math and reading.
I'm Darla Minor, the Executive Director of Innovation Curriculum and Programs, and I'll talk a little bit about our STAR results this evening. STAR is an online assessment that is used as a universal screening tool within our SRBI process. This assessment gives us test results in both reading and math. This assessment gives us test results in both reading and math, and it's adaptive, meaning that the test does self-adjust based upon the answers that the students give. We use the STAR universal screening tool to help us determine which students need a closer look, and depending on these results, students are given additional assessments which allow us to identify potential skill needs and develop plans to provide supports to each child. As a district, Fairfield uses district average results for each grade level from fall to spring in order to track growth over time. When we see growth of less than 1.0, it does signal a need for a deeper analysis to be performed and to look for trends across the district. These trends guide our future work. Here we can see our district average results for STAR reading, and again, we are looking at growth from fall to spring, and we're looking at scores of 1.0 or higher in our last column under change. Here we can see that we have shown acceptable growth in grades 2 through 7, but in grades 8 to 9, there's a potential need for a deeper dive. It's also important to note that due to the way the scores are calculated on this reading assessment, that reading growth will occur more rapidly in the lower grades and then begin to plateau as students move up the grades. As we look at our math scores, we can see that in each grade area, students have been making acceptable growth on the math STAR assessment. And now, I'm going to bring Pamela Caroll back up so she can talk more about our SRBI process.
So, you've heard a theme in all of our work today, referring to SRBI. And what SRBI really does is it looks at consistently screening all students. Then, from those screens, we do further diagnostics so that students who are identified as needing more help get more help in the core classrooms and with specialists. I wanted to share with you an example of SRBI on the ground in one of our schools last spring. So, this is one of our elementary schools using one of our universal screens that we give to all students, which is the Fuentes-Mpanel Benchmark Assessment. The first time the assessment was administered, 47% of these kindergartners were identified as at-risk, below expectations. So, the response of the school was to look at that data, to create an all-hands-on-deck approach, and to push into those classrooms to deliver differentiated small-group instruction. By the winter of 2017, 22% of those same students were at-risk, and by spring, it was 16%. We were very happy to see that, in the fall, same students coming back, and it's not an exact matched cohort. There may have been students who left and students who came in, but still, it's 16% of the students showed at-risk. Now, those students are on our radar, and we continue to work to deliver differentiated instruction with those students, and we'll have our next round of data in very shortly to act and to continue to change our instruction based on the needs of those students. And now, Mike Cummings will come back.
I'm sorry about that. This is our last slide, I promise. So, before we go, just a couple of things to highlight. We use data tonight, and we use data throughout the year to identify instructional strengths and growth goals and to drive professional learning for school leaders, teachers, and our support staff. We prioritize our resources to maximize student learning under an SRBI framework, and that's work that will grow and continue in the coming years. And finally, the most important work we do is to engage students and teachers in joyful learning as we improve daily instruction. I just want to thank, before we close tonight and turn to questions, I want to thank the presenters tonight. I want to thank our staff who also came out this evening, and I certainly want to thank the board and the audience tonight for listening, and now, again, we welcome your questions. Maybe what we want to do is turn on the lights and have you resume your positions.
Let's try for a moment to just ask questions from whatever board members have them, save different staff from popping up and popping down and popping up and popping down. If we find that happens too often, we might want to just go through the presentation and wherever you've written questions so that the staff person who's got those pages and slides will only be up once. Let's see where we are at the moment. Who has a question? Ms. Pitco?
My question through the chair to Mrs. Minor. It's actually about your two slides. You'll have to excuse me. I'm a teacher, but I have a kindergartner, so I'm not versed in the metrics of STAR. Looking at the slide, trying to understand if this is based on a scale, percentage points. You did a great presentation. I'm just a little confused because I've never actually looked at a STAR report to understand what these scores represent.
Okay. Usually, when you receive your parent report, you'll receive the percentile ranking, which will compare how your child performed with other children across the district. The slides that we used, use the grade equivalent score, and that score is one that districts technically use to show growth from the beginning to the end of the year. Basically, when students take this test, they all receive a scaled score. The grade equivalent takes a look at what was the typical scaled score that students in a particular grade level might have gotten. So, it might take a look at grade 5 students across the entire nation from all different kinds of school districts, from inner-city to urban to suburban, and what was the typical score that students in 5th grade received. So, when you see a grade equivalent score, it's showing you, and usually, they're higher than the grade level in Fairfield because we're a high-performing school district. So, a typical 3rd grader in Fairfield could score as high as a 4 or a 5 grade equivalent, meaning that 4th grade students across the country from many different districts perform similarly to our students in Fairfield.
So, just to clarify, what is the scale? If I'm looking at this and reading it, and it says a 3.8, I don't know what that's out of.
It's based on, like, a 10-month scale, so 3.0, 3.1. So, September is 3.0, October is 3.1. So, you can look at a 3.5, and it would be like 3rd grade, 5th month, and that's how it's calculated.
A lot of data out there, so other questions? I have patience until somebody clearly says it's my turn. Mrs. Maxon-Kelly.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I was hoping other board members would go first and that it would cross mine off the list.
Why don't you go through three or four?
Before I start, is there anyone else who would like to jump in before me? Damn. Yeah, but that wasn't one of my questions. Well, first, I'll actually, I'll start with a topic that came up earlier among board members, and I'm not sure to whom to direct this, and that is the correlation between the STAR data and the SBAK data. Because if these are two different beasts, and we're having to prepare kids for both and valuing both, I can't believe that we would value them both the same. On the other hand, if there is a strong correlation, I'd like to hear more about that topic.
I'll go ahead and jump in on this one. This is a project that I jumped into, a fairly large project, because what we end up doing is, we kind of look at how a student scored on, say, a 4th grade, then we look backward and saw how they also did on the STAR, the three successive tests. And then, we did a statistical test to look how strongly correlated are the STAR scores to the Smarter Balance. It was, in educational testing, it was about as strong as you can get. I mean, what we're dealing with, for those of you laying in terms here, a zero correlation is no relationship whatsoever. A 1.0 is a perfect correlation. We're dealing up and over .8. So, a strong correlation between performance on the STAR to performance on the Smarter Balance. And we were able to kind of then take those and actually develop cut scores that were mapped similar to the Smarter Balance. So, kind of got similar language when we're talking between those two different assessments.
And then, as a follow-up to that, and I apologize, I'm in the world of high school, so I actually forget with elementary school, state mandates which of the SBAK grades, not counting science, but English Language Arts and math. Are those required each year?
Smarter Balance?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that you could never, I know with science...
3 to 8. The high school has the SAT, which is the standard.
I thought at one point, you could skip one, and that would be, if we have the STAR data, then, okay, so never mind that. And I wish I'd organized these by person. Sorry. Let me try to get to the secondary math. All right, so that's that. One thing, and this is, I don't know if this applies to math as well as Language Arts, but I know one thing that Mr. Chiapetta made a reference to, which I'll hope to hear from him, but also for you. What I've never liked, and I've never brought up the issue, for example, something that we didn't get in a very data were our SAT scores. You know, we got our AP scores, we've got these, but SAT hasn't been part of this discussion, and I don't believe we got that data in the report that we received. But if there's supposed to be that correlation between certain SAT score and college readiness, as we track back, what I have a very little tolerance for is the whole notion of test prep, and yet, it's unequivocal that that test prep equates to higher test scores. That doesn't necessarily mean you've improved them as learners, as, you know, giving them certain other skills. And I know there was reference to that reading comprehension, that one way we had to improve their reading comprehension scores was changing the types of questions. In other words, we had to prepare them for the type of question. Are you finding that same thing in math? That, in other words, is the data informing better math instruction for skills we value? Or is it that you're just needing to prepare them for the kinds of questions they're going to get?
I would say, I mean, it's more about, one, because really, math, we value problem solvers. And a problem solver is given to an unique situation and be able to kind of discern the information, then solve the problem. And the types of tasks on the Smarter Balance do that. I mean, that's ultimately what we want when students actually leave our system, was we want them to be good problem solvers. And it's just, it's a metric of that. We don't teach to the test. We teach through problem solving, and it just informs us how our students perform based off of that. So, that's one of the things, and also, when we dug deeper, was like, we found our students, based off our data, was like, we could improve on our concepts and procedures, but when we talked to our teachers, they were doing, the students were doing well when they were teaching the unit and other different things, but they weren't maintaining it over time. Well, that drove us to where, well, we needed to keep on practicing those skills over time, not just for a single unit. So, it's a multi-pronged approach to, we want to develop problem solvers, but we also want to help maintain skills. So, I mean, it's a balanced approach, as we always talk about in math. So, it's not all one left or one right. We want to develop both sides.
Okay, and you perfectly walked into my next question. I wasn't going to ask it yet, but you talk about maintaining that skill. Has there been any analysis done of the value of the summer work that gets assigned? And I'm not talking about the AP work. I'm talking about the grades, all of the other math course work.
I mean, analysis, I mean, I don't have anything to make a claim like that, but a lot of times, when we talk about the work, it's just to help maintain that over time. And we want students to keep on practicing, because if, I always talk about, if you stop using it, you start losing it. So, we still want to have the students maintain and practice those skills in leading up to in preparation for, as they enter in our courses and moving forward. That's the whole purpose of those, not to, is it gotcha? It's one of those things where we want to help.
Oh, I love them. So, that's, it's, no, but I was wondering, for example, when we saw that last slide of the kindergarten ending in 16% and first grade starting at 16%, I was wondering if there had been any measure of, you know, we have found that this practice, these skills, and the students haven't lost a beat versus we needed this level of, you know, reminding...
And that's one of the things that now, because we're in our second year of using the STAR, we actually, we can look at, okay, how they performed in the end of, say, the prior grade, and then how did they start up and end? So, we can almost kind of measure that summer learning loss. And we're not really finding that, I mean, a small decline, but it's negligible. So, that's something that's really concerning based off what the data is pointing out to be.
Okay, and I think Mr. Chiapetta is waiting to tackle my other question. Thank you.
Just going back to your question about, is it a really, is it a test prep or is it skill development? I think it's mostly skill development with at least test awareness. You know, and what I mean by that is, when I spoke about the listening component, the listening component of the Smarter Balance is something that kids will do from 3rd grade all the way up to 8th grade. And essentially, students will have to listen to about a minute's worth of not-the-most-exciting text in the entire world, and then half, and then that's it. They've got to answer, I think, anywhere between three to four questions. And one thing that this, we were curious, we were like, well, how come they're not doing as well in this as they're doing on the writing section, the writing research section, or the reading comprehension section? So, we watched it in action, and what we realized that kids were doing is that they didn't realize, number one, in terms of test familiarity, that you could listen to it more than once. They would listen to it and be like, I'm done, and then just move on to the questions. They also weren't yet developing the skill of, when you listen to something, how do you take notes to something that you listened, that you may not be that interested in listening to? So, what we found was, by doing a very sort of quick diagnostic, that by forcing kids to listen to that text once, and then twice, and by the third time, their accuracy on making and getting the right answer increased a tenfold. So, not only was it a test-taking strategy, but it was also like, when you're listening to a text, here's how you take notes on it, and here's another way to approach it. When I was talking a little bit before about the types of questions, we did an analysis because we thought we were asking all these higher-order questions, but when we looked back at some of the ways in which the Smarter Balance asks comprehension questions, we noticed that in 8th grade, they started to use the word infer and inference more than any other kind of question. And so, we could ask kids to analyze, or synthesize, or create, or hypothesize, but we didn't realize that some kids were like, well, I didn't know what infer meant. So, it was matching the types of questions to the types of skills that we were already asking kids to do. So, I don't think it has a lot about test prep, in so much as about familiarity with the kinds of questions that they're going to get, making sure that it does match sort of the skills that we have them, that we're addressing in the classroom.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Maxon-Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Pitco?
And thank you from Mrs. Maxon-Kelly for leading the door to this. I wanted to ask, as far as listening, it's very funny, I teach freshman and sophomore science, and the quote that I put on the board today is, "Most people do not listen with the intent to understand, they listen with the intent to reply."
Yes.
So, my question is, are we doing something with this skill for the students to scaffold the learning as far back as elementary school to incorporate it now that it is part of Smarter Balance, Common Core?
We definitely have done that at the middle level and then trying to work it down to elementary, because we did notice, I guess, that the only example I gave you was of 8th grade based on time, but we noticed that this was a reoccurring lower end of the score for all of our students from 6th grade on up. So, it really became more of a focus area for the entire middle school Language Arts Department to think about, what can we do in terms of the types of skills that you can do? As I was saying before, meaning like, when you listen to something, how do you actually listen, not just to reply, but actually comprehend? What does it mean to take notes as you're listening to someone talk to you, whether it's your teacher or a peer in a conversation? And actually, working with teachers to make opportunities to help students learn to acquire those skills, whether it's stopping a conversation halfway through, making notes, what do notes look like in that way? Giving kids opportunities, not just in Language Arts, but across content areas, to listen to a presentation, and then with no text, and then be able to sort of, number one, reply to it in terms of, did they understand what was said? But then, how do you draw kind of inferences based on what you've heard? So, we are kind of developing it kind of across, but then, the other way too, is looking and trying to get kids to understand, what kinds of questions are you presented with when you're given a listening task? Because the SBA, the Smarter Balance, has very specific question types. And so, part of it is preparing them for that, but it's also building in those experiences across it. There was one, I mean, this happened at all three of our middle schools, there was one in particular that focused it across every single content area from not just the core ones, but into like special areas too, to give kids more opportunities to do that.
Back to Mrs. Maxon-Kelly. Oh, no, it's not fair for you to write down more questions.
No, I'm trying to organize them in one place so I can just take, could I take a break and defer to Mrs. Leeper?
It's somewhat related. I really enjoy, like, the strand-level analysis that you shared, and similar with science, and how you were able to identify, like, specific weaknesses based on the results. Because I think sometimes, data is misinterpreted as, like, gotcha instead of what are the gaps we're missing. So, I was wondering if, I think it's Mr. Wakeman, but if you noticed any larger trend within elementary math based on the SBA assessment?
The SBA assessment is...
The SBA assessment is more of a pointer and not as specific as, we need to help make some of those instructional decisions. And what we had noticed in some areas is, the problem solving seems to be a strength, and the area was around some of the procedural pieces. We have also had conversations with our grade six colleagues and middle school colleagues, as well as Dr. Raz Musin, in talking about what are kids coming to the middle school with, and what areas do they need to, do we need to strengthen at the elementary level? And just some recent shifts that we've made over the past couple of years, we've heard that children with long division and being prepared to handle the grade six material, that was an area that we needed to bolster. We've dropped that, even though it's a grade six standard, we've dropped that down into grade four and revisited again in grade five. More recently, we've bolstered some of the work in the area of understanding fractions and operating with fractions. And as a matter of fact, we had some professional development this afternoon with some teachers looking at helping to strengthen multi-digit computation with just multiplication and division, and providing some resources for teachers to use that. So it's a continual process of revising and addressing and listening to what teachers are saying, and looking at how our students are performing. And the tool, like, the Smarter Balance is really a lagging indicator. It doesn't help us with today's work, it just tells us, how did we do based on what we did today? But it's after the fact, and those students have moved on. So we are really trying to listen to and modify and adjust as we hear from teachers and look at daily student performance. Okay.
Somebody else want to give for Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly?
Go ahead.
Lifeline? Mrs. Jacobson?
Yes, hi. I'm going to ask some questions about science, actually. I have a lot, but I'm going to jump right to that. As we look, can you guys hear me? Is this very great? I know that we're going to be doing the curriculum and rolling that all out in the spring. My concern is that we are participating in a pilot test this year based on standards that none of our children, well, for about 40 percent of the strands have never been taught to them. That's an issue for me. So my question is, knowing that this will actually count next year, in the same year that we're rolling it out district-wide, my question is, how do you feel at this point about how prepared staff will be in terms of resources, materials, professional development, to roll that out district-wide and for us to perform on that assessment year one?
So just to look, there's a couple of questions in there, so I'll try to dissect it into pieces.
Sure.
The field test that's being rolled out this year is being rolled out in grades five, eight, and 11.
Right.
So we, you know, I worked, have worked up until this year primarily with the eight and 11 portion. I do feel that, we've been working on this curriculum for two solid years.
Okay.
So our teachers have been starting to embed some of the instructional strategies and the new standards into what they're currently doing, from, you know, into middle school and high school, and I would let Walter speak to the elementary school portion of it. So I'm confident that our students are going to be fairly well-prepared. It, you know, everyone in the state is in the same boat.
Yeah.
Because initially, the state had said that they were going to give us a three-year window, and then this year they said, guess what? The field test is this year and it counts next year.
Right.
Now, counts, we don't really know what that means.
Well, it'll be in the accountability index process.
Right. This year, we're only going to be held accountable for participation rate, which has not really been an issue here in Fairfield. So next year, it will not count, as far as we know at this moment, for a student's graduation, but their score will, of course, you know, follow them, as do, you know, any other scores for any other standardized test that they take. I can say that the middle and high school teachers have had a tremendous amount of professional development in the last two years, and we're continuing that. Fairfield has actually been a host site for all of Fairfield County for what's called NGSX training, and I won't go into the gory details, I'm sure Mrs. Pitco knows what it is, but it's a five-day, very intensive training for teachers in the new standards. And we have been fortunate enough that since we have volunteered to host, we've been able to send about a dozen of our teachers for free. This is $1,500 per teacher, and we have not had to pay to send them, so that's been a real benefit for us. And so now we have a trainer of trainer models, where we have point people in each building and in different grade levels who are experts. I also attended the training, as did Walter. And, you know, because we have so many school sites, Walter and I can't be everywhere all the time, so we are relying on some of these point people. But the teachers are very excited about this, and they've been trying out some units and having tremendous success, so, you know, it's one of those success begets success sort of situations. It'll be interesting to see, we are far ahead of many of our surrounding districts. We're going to be rolling out, the plan is to roll out the high school curriculum first, so the nine-through-12 curriculum first.
Next year.
Next year, correct. The resource piece, we are identifying appropriate resources, and that work is ongoing, and we will be bringing that to you with the curriculum presentation in April, I believe it's in April. But the most important piece in all of this is the training of the teachers. That's the crucial, crucial piece. You know, they can have great resources, which, you know, we will provide them with the best ones that we can find, but they need to be confident that they can do this, and in talking with them, I believe that they are and will continue that professional development model. So I'm, you know, I'm confident that, just as we did this year, outperformed many of our DURG-A neighbors. You know, I've actually, for the first time ever, gotten calls from DURG-A surrounding towns saying, what did you do that was so different? Because, just to give you a, for instance, there are three DURG-A towns that saw drops in their science scores that were in the neighborhood of 20 percentage points in one year. So the fact that our teachers have been implementing some of this stuff, I think, explains why, even though we did see a drop, it's a very small drop in comparison to some of our neighbors.
Okay, so you're not rolling it out K-12 next year?
That is not the plan at this time, and I'd let Dr. Jones speak to that more so than, more so than me. Right now, the plan is to roll out the high school portion initially.
Okay.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Certainly. You're on Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly's time at the moment, so she welcomes any-
No, I'm set.
You're all set, okay. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, is that because of the new high school requirements? Are we, starting with nine-through-12, because the classes have to change, the course descriptions, teacher certifications, things like that?
I think, you know, there's some, there's arguments to be made for rolling it out in any particular place, right? You know, pros and cons to rolling it out in any particular place. I think the high school teachers are, because they are so passionate about their content, and they are really content area experts, they are ready to roll this out and excited to do so. So I think we're going to capitalize on that. And then, you know, there's also the, and I'm going to speak to the elementary part a little bit, if Mr. Wakeman wants to jump in, he's certainly welcome to, but we have recently rolled out, you know, some literacy work at the elementary school that has been very intense. We've also rolled out three-five social studies at the elementary this year, and we're looking to get, you know, some solid ground under those before we roll out yet another new initiative for elementary teachers who have to teach everything. So in thinking about that, I think that's one of the reasons, and, you know, again, I'd welcome Dr. Jones to jump in if she wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I think we talked about it last year in the budget as well. I think it is elementary overload is one component, making sure we're not putting too much too quickly on our teachers. Also, budgetarily, science is one of the more expensive curriculums for us to implement. When you see the budget in the spring, you know, right now, the number we're using is about a half million dollars just for nine-twelves. And what we don't want to do is roll out new curriculum and not provide the resources and materials that our teachers say they need for 21st century curriculum. So it's really multifaceted, but more than anything, I think, is that elementary overload. And we are looking at other ways to support science curriculum in elementary to continue that next year in other ways, before we fully implement.
I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelly?
Should I stay up here, or can I go sit down?
You're set.
Okay. Thank you. First, I did, I meant to actually start with this, I just wanted to commend whoever, however it came together on staff, the direction of this presentation, as opposed to just a data report through, I think this was so much more useful. Who cares about the data? What are we doing with it? How is it informing instruction? And what is the big picture was, to me, so much more valuable than just looking at a series of numbers. So I thank all of the staff for pulling that together. I believe my first set of questions are for Mr. Cummings, and if I'm wrong, oh, well, I tried. My first question was, in all of this analysis from all of the people you're supervising, I was wondering if, to any degree, it has led to a reexamination of the elementary school's schedule? And I don't mean the six-day schedule, I mean the allotment in the day that each subject is given? I mean, as things become more interdisciplinary, et cetera, I was wondering?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. I think that we have, really, over the past two years, and particularly over the last year and a half, worked to take advantage of the great advantage the elementary school has, in that it is one teacher for all those subjects. And as overwhelming as that can be for a teacher, how do we integrate the curriculum? And really, it's, actually, let me rephrase that. The best way to approach that is, how do we integrate the instructional model? And then through the instructional model, deliver the curriculum? So we've really worked with social studies and science as our leads, and supported through the work that Ms. Carella has led in redesigning our pacing guides in our, some of our units, to work around an inquiry model that will support both the new social studies and science standards, but really supports the level of instruction, that problem solving, that deeper thinking that we want kids to engage in from the earliest grades. So that has been the ongoing focus of, and that will continue to be the ongoing focus of our work at the elementary level. Again, to really teach through the inquiry method, or the inquiry model of instruction, the curricular areas. As you know, at the elementary level, so much of it, particularly, and this is a gross overstatement, but the K-2 work is really about the skill acquisition, and the three-five work is, you know, traditionally the move to the comprehension. What we've certainly learned over the years, though, is that the skill acquisition, K-12 never stops. And so how do we use content, how do we build skill development continually for students so that they can acquire the content that's available to them and be critical thinkers?
And on that skill acquisition, I know we, back when social studies presented, there had been that discussion of a skills rubric as, in terms of vertical alignment. Is that part of this discussion?
That is definitely part of this discussion. We are looking to, you know, with the academic expectations that the high schools are implementing as our lead, build those back through the middle and elementary grades, making them age-appropriate, of course, for the students and staff. But those really become our leads, and supplemented with kind of the social civic pieces that we need to develop within our kids as well. So a level of, a rubric as an assessment tool to measure the growth, but also, to the point we made in the presentation tonight, being more finite in our expectations for what kids should master, rather than, you know, the traditional and overworked analogy of the mile-wide, inch-deep river, to really make learning more meaningful with a deeper analysis.
Thank you. I'm not done.
I didn't think so.
No. And on the data, again, I'll just reiterate through the chair to Dr. Jones, that I would be interested in getting the, or we, the SAT data, and also the strategic school profile data, however that gets delivered to us. But specifically to Mr. Cummings, he knows I've been speaking to him for years about the recess, is that I would be curious if at the end of the year, we could get some feedback in, as we talk about how the students are scheduled in elementary school, how that additional time that has been worked in for them to take breaks, what kind of feedback the teachers can give in terms of its value, expansion, or anything like that? Just throw that out there.
Sure.
And my last two questions to you were regarding professional development, because that came, was reiterated throughout these slides, about how the different things are driving professional development. And I was just wondering about two specific topics, how often is professional development done from different schools? So not just grade-three teachers at Osborne Hill, but grade-three teachers across the district, you know, AP US history teachers from, you know, the two, from the high schools? That, and then also the, if there has been any increased value, we've heard about outside professional development being brought in for aspects of the social-emotional development, but I'm not hearing it for academics. And that was something in our district improvement plan, it's still something I'm interested in, so I throw those out there too, as two topics, that professional development across the schools, and then from outside sources.
The professional development across the schools has been more steadfast in the secondary level, both middle and high, because of the, because of existing structures that have allowed for department meetings in that sense. We have, in the last year, particularly this year, reinstituted that at the elementary level, that was an outcry from our teachers. A lot of the professional development had been fractured across the buildings, and it was, it was good, but what the teachers were missing was the ability to talk with other grade-three or grade-four, five teachers across the district. So we've worked to do that, and the half-days that the board has supported in the calendar have given us the opportunity, because they fundamentally have addressed the issue of travel time. So we now have a longer period of time to get the teachers together, and with that longer period of time, one, we can accommodate the travel, but two, we can go more in-depth with the work that they're asked to do. So there's been both, and that, that kind of grade-level planning, for lack of a better way of putting it, is really focused on two things. One is the dissemination of information to them, but also, more importantly, their ability to get together and collaborate and plan together. And that's a skill set that we want to continue to build, because ultimately, we want to move from a, say, a heavier ratio on dissemination to a heavier ratio on the collaboration. We have an awful lot of highly skilled people in this district. We have not been able to do a good job getting them together and allowing them to collaborate and build on each other's skill sets, and that's really where we have to go. And your second question?
The outside professional development?
Yes. We, a lot of focus right now has been at elementary language arts, and also, we have been working with outside consultants on any English learners component. We do this in other departments as necessary, and I think you'll see this ramp up as we go into science next year. We have, we also have, I would say, engaged with the Fairfield Museum, for example, with social studies. One of the things that we are doing, both with inside presenters and the outside presenters, looking for the accountability, you know, you can get lost in the glamour of a big-name person coming in, but if you're not asking people to do anything with it, it really is not money well-spent. So we're looking to follow it up, and again, rather than have people come in and be talked to by a glamorous name, that with those, if you bring in the right glamorous names, they're going to actually engage the teachers in the work right in front of them, and teachers will leave that session with changed practice. And work done.
Great. Well, as a teacher, thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
And then, unless somebody else wants to jump in, I have more.
No, keep going.
Okay.
Not all night, but keep going.
No, Dr. Puglisi, if I could speak to Dr. Puglisi about a couple of comments you made. On one of the slides, you referenced the programs and the curricula being shaped by feedback from teachers, students, and family. And I was wondering if you could speak anymore to the students and family part, because that's certainly something as a parent I hear a lot about, in terms of students having great ideas about things that could be changed. I was wondering if that has been increasingly formalized? I know we put it into the teacher evaluation plan, but I was just wondering if you could speak to that more?
Officially formalized, I wouldn't say that exactly. And a lot of the feedback really comes from the building administrators especially, they're the ones directly speaking, most oftenly with, most awfully with the students and with the families directly. There are many occasions where we're involved in those meetings as well. But as a formal process, besides the curriculum revision, where we do have focus groups and those kinds of things, which some of you have been involved in in the past, there's not, I wouldn't say there's a formal process of getting that, other than through, you know, different questions and meetings that come through the buildings, through the house masters, for example, at the high schools. And we're involved in many of those as well.
So if families are reporting to teachers, reporting to administrators, that, you know, we're having to get outside help to help with this aspect of math, I'm having to, you know, whatever struggles that they're having, you're getting that through the administrators then?
A lot of times, yeah. And we get, we have a lot of communication directly with the- And we get, we have a lot of communication directly with the parents as well, both positive and negative things, where, you know, we get a lot of emails or phone calls saying, you know, just as many as how wonderful their social studies class is, for example, and give specific reasons for it. And of course, we get the questions, too, where there may be an issue that we need to look into.
And then, just one other question about the APs, because I know we had, there was some significant changes in math, and obviously, you could see an impact on scores as teachers adjust for that. What kind, I know with the US government AP exam for, that they'll be rolling out next year, that comes with it some very significant curricula changes, curriculum changes. And I was wondering, what level of support do you get from college board on something like that? Are the teachers having to, you know, now you have to do Supreme Court cases, but what the heck are you going to do with it on the test?
Yeah.
You know, are they given much support, or they're just given a new topic?
Yeah. Every time there's a course redesigned, they do come out with sample questions, with a whole new course description, and it's pretty comprehensive. They also do a series of professional development opportunities for teachers. For example, at TAF, there's, there's a year, a week-long professional development workshop that we usually have the teachers go to when there's a course redesigned, or when a new teacher is asked to, or volunteers to, to teach the, to teach an AP course. And besides the, the week-long workshops at TAFT or at Fordham, for example, they're at other places, too, they do run periodic full-day workshops as well. So, yeah, they do, they do a pretty good job. I would say, you know, we've had mixed results or mixed feelings about some of the workshops that they've offered, but I would say they, they do try, and they do, they do a pretty good job of getting us ready. And a lot of it also is up to the teachers and us, reading the new documents and looking for new resources and getting suggestions from the teachers themselves.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to take the rest of my questions offline. I know that breaks your heart. I only have, the only last one I'd wanted to send through the chair to Dr. Jones, the reference to the increased use through the IT department of technology to give the data, you know, that real-time accessibility to staff, is that something that's coming with any financial impact? Is that something we would be anticipating, so we would want to know more about, or?
Really, what they were referencing is work that our own IT department has been doing along with this team. And we really have done intensive work at the lower level, and we'll be moving that up, getting teacher feedback on what that data needs to look like inside the system, and credit to this team and also our IT department. They've done a tremendous amount of work, so it's no expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Labor.
Other board members that was missed, well, let's see, one, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I think this is for Mr. Chiappetta. It was regarding the, you talked about the newcomer academy idea.
Uh-huh.
Is that something, like, do other districts do that? Or is it just kind of an idea? Is it something that, you know, you might want to flesh out and, you know, have as part of, like, I'm assuming there would be some costs associated with it? I just, I'm just curious if you have a little more detail.
Sure, sure. It's really in the idea phase now. I mean, really, what we've, you know, with this, looking at English learners in a new way, recognizing the fact that they really are spread out just across the district in, you know, smaller numbers in certain areas, larger numbers in certain areas, the diversity of language, and then thinking about how other districts have approached it, there are some districts who do just that. Like, we've looked at at least three. One is the way that sort of Danbury structures it because of their very specific population. Norwalk structures it a very specific way, too. But what's unique about those two districts is that they don't necessarily have the diversity of English learners that we do. They're more concentrated in specific regions. Now, another district that actually does it really well, not surprisingly, that has a very similar population is Greenwich.
Yeah.
Greenwich has basically kind of taken this model and done something very similar to that. And so, one of the things that we're going to be doing, as we're sort of developing this idea, is trying to look at the, how they, they do, they also, they also have a lot, a greater number of resources than we do, just for those particular students. So, we're trying to think about looking at how they approach that and how we can sort of replicate some of those things here in Fairfield.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, as always, if you have questions on the document, feel free to contact Dr. Jones, and she'll either get the answer for you or get a staff person who can talk to you about it. Very good presentation. I want to thank all of the staff who were part of it, not only who were here tonight, but who helped put the whole thing together. The next item on our agenda is item 6B, approval of the school calendar. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 school calendar as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Ms. Pitco, do I have a second? Ms. Maxon-Cannelli. Exhibit 1 has the memo that explains responses to questions and various survey results, but it is this page, the actual calendar, that we are approving. So, Dr. Jones, do you have any initial comments, or do you wish to just go directly to Q and A?
We can go directly to Q and A.
Questions or comments from board members? This is a voting item, so we'll go to the public, but Ms. Maxon-Cannelli.
Yeah, I had reached out to Dr. Jones with the idea and, before making a formal motion, interested in input from the board, on the idea in October of moving either the 10th or the 11th, and on that, I would want to defer to the high school teachers, because I don't, I thought that was a great point raised by Mr. Smoller at the last meeting regarding, don't hit the same days in the cycle. But I'd been interested in moving the 10th or the 11th to October 8th, with the idea being that that's Columbus Day, so that in, for those, for the increased number of parents who would not be working that day, it would therefore have less impact on them in terms of childcare coverage. And so, as I said before I wanted, before I made a formal motion about that, I'd wanted to get input from the board.
From the superintendent or from the board?
Well, I apologize. I did reach out to Dr. Jones, and she did give me feedback with, you know, some concern that, you know, that staff, well, I don't need to speak for you, but I did reach out. I did get her feedback, but, Dr. Jones, maybe you'd like to speak to that yourself.
You know, if you remember, when we originally put the calendar out, we had all three early releases in a row, and part of that was being responsive to those parents that we hear from that have grandma, that comes and babysits, and it's difficult to get that person to come two weeks in a row. So, ultimately, after the board discussed this last time, we did put out a survey to get feedback from the community on, did they want all three in a row, or was it better to separate them? The only concern I had about that is that this is kind of the compromise, it's about, I think on the survey, it was about 60-40, wanted it to look like this. That 40% of parents that like those days in a row because grandma comes, now we would be having a day on, for instance, a Monday, then a Thursday, and then the following week a Thursday. So, you're really spreading those out, and it just, it all has to do with childcare, really. But that's no impact on us necessarily.
So, comments from board members? Ms. Maxon-Cannelli is looking for feedback. I'll only say that moving days at a board table with the multiple impacts it has on just scheduling, I'm hesitant to move a day that staff have not had really a sufficient amount of time to say, okay, if we move this, how does that impact something else and whatnot? So, I'm a little hesitant. If you're looking for feedback. Mrs. Vitale.
Well, I like the idea. I think just some of the concerns, the 10th, the PSATs are given, so I don't think you can move that day. And then, if you move the 11th to the 8th, then you're hitting, in terms of the block schedule, the two same days for early dismissal, which might be problematic also. But I do appreciate the effort.
Other comments? What is your wish?
Well, I guess I'll, I'll put it on the table as a motion, if not simply, because then that will also open up that amendment to public comment and hear that. So, again, complete brain freeze on the PSAT, although that is a day in the cycle, and but, so therefore, I didn't know if putting it on Monday, and I don't know if Mr. Ebling or Mr. Hatzis can speak to that, in terms of, how, how does the cycle work on the PSAT day? Does that just rotate, so, for example, if, if the 8th were a day one?
So, do you want him to comment before you make the motion, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, let's bring the headmaster to the microphone, and perhaps you can restate what you're actually asking.
Hi. Good afternoon. Greg Hatzis, Headmaster of Ludlow High School. Mr. Ebling?
Thank you, Mr. Hatzis.
Generally, what we do, since we started implementing the PSAT on, on the second Wednesday in October, or whenever the College Board schedules it, is we make that Wednesday and that Thursday the same day in the rotation, because generally with, we have 10th graders and 11th graders who are taking the test that day, plus, we need a tremendous number of proctors for that day, so it's very difficult. You know, at Ludlow, we have, I think, both at Ludlow and Ward, we have special arrangements for our seniors to do college-related activities or post-high school activities, and, you know, some combination of teaching the freshmen or special programs for the freshmen. So, it's really not a strong instructional day, because the PSATs virtually take, you know, three and a half, four hours for, to implement. So, the kids are spent, the teachers are spent, so that's why having the early release was very helpful for us on that day. Plus, it's a great, it was a great opportunity for us for professional development with all of the NIESC work that both high schools are engaging in. So, we generally had the same-day rotation on the Wednesday and the Thursday. Monday and Wednesday would be the same days in the rotation, but since Wednesday is sort of an X-day, it really, Wednesday and Thurs, I'm sorry, Monday and Thursday would be the same days. Did I confuse you completely? No, sorry.
And then, if, I don't know, if I can just?
Mr. Ebling, do you have any other further comment that you want to make? No? Okay. Back to Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Oh, well, I'd just be curious, since we have two staff members here, if you have any reaction to the idea of having the early release be, I mean, I think this is honestly more of an elementary school issue, but, but again, the notion being to have one of those be on Monday, because that also, again, the idea was simply to make use of the parents who are home, so that parents don't have a child-concern issue for that day. And again, you might have no input on that, or maybe you do have some insight.
I don't have a lot of input. The, the one piece is that it takes a lot of preparation to get that Wednesday day together, and we could really use the Monday with our staff and with our students to present all the changes that take place in the schedule for Wednesday. So, not having that day would mean Tuesday would be our only day to really get a lot of information out to them about locations and testing times and where they are. So, I think we'd prefer to keep the Wednesday-Thursday schedule, actually, where we repeat the day on Thursday that we lose on, on Wednesday.
Well, Monday would still be a day of school. It would just be early release.
Right.
Was the idea.
That's true.
Okay.
So, what is your desire?
I'll put the motion out there, because I'd like to hear from the public, and they're here, and if no public comes forward, then I, again, I would like to hear from the board. Thank you, Mrs. Vitale, for weighing in. So, I'd like to make the motion that it would be, I guess, moving the October 11th early-release day to Monday, October 8th.
Okay. Right. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Acer, do you want to make any more argument in behalf of it? Mr. Acer, any comments on behalf of it?
No, but I, with regards to the younger students in the elementary, I kind of agree with Ms. Maxon-Cannelli here. I see what everything's being said, but I would support that, that move.
Other comments from board members?
The conference scheduled on the 11th impacts the need for the early release? Am I reading this right? On the 11th? Doesn't it say, there's an ISAC conference on the 11th?
Right, so that the high school would be using the early-release time for NIESC preparation while the elementary school is using it for conferences?
Hmm.
Which doesn't involve outside staff, so that would just be an internal matter.
Other comments? Mrs. Gerber.
I, I'm torn, because on the one hand, I do like the idea, since we do know that people are off on, on Columbus Day. My concern is just that, since parents were surveyed with different questions, and, you know, granted, I will say, in terms of the numbers, and, I mean, you could take it more than once, so I'm still not clear exactly how many people ended up taking the survey or took it more than once. But I will say that the answers that we got were fairly definitive, and I think there are some people who probably think, okay, well, this is what the calendar is, so that if we're changing it here at the table with no advance notice, it would just concern me that if they thought it was going to be one way, and then it was going to be something else. But that said, I don't know. I just, I'm always hesitant to, to make changes like this at the table, but I do understand the rationale.
Any other comments before we go to the public? So, the motion, I'll ask the secretary to repeat the motion, so that the public will know what it is that you can come forward and comment on.
Okay, the motion is to change the early dismissal day from Thursday, October 11th to Monday, October 8th.
Any member of the public wish to come forward and comment on that suggested change? Hearing none, back to the board. Are you ready to vote, or do you have any final comments that you wish to make?
I've made my point.
We'll vote. Ms. Pitco stepped out for a moment, but we'll vote. All in favor of the motion, does, do you need it to be restated, or was it just stated? You're all set? You know what you're voting on? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli and Mr. Acer, all opposed. Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, and Mr. Peterson. The motion fails.
Two-six.
Two-six. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions or suggestions for the calendar as presented? Okay, so now, we're back to the main motion, which means the public gets to also comment on the main motion, which is adoption of the calendar as presented tonight in enclosure number one. Anybody wish to, anybody wish to come forward to speak on the adoption of the calendar? Hearing none, back to the board for a vote.
Actually, I had one question. I'm sorry.
Okay. No, you're allowed to have a question.
Okay. Just, I guess, through the chair to Dr. Jones. It's just, here on the calendar, it says the 13th, as of now, of June 2019, is the last day of school, and that's early dismissal, pre-K through 12. Now, I know in the past, the, the past practice has been, the last two days have been early dismissal, but in looking in past calendars, going back as far as they're posted on the website, they were never marked as early dismissal, the second-to-last day or the last day of school. So, I just, but since this is specified here, so we are saying that the last day of school be an early dismissal day, and I guess the follow-up to that would be, assuming that we will have at least a couple of snow days, will it still only be the last day of school that will be early dismissal? Or would it be the last two? I was never sure if that second early dismissal day kicked in because we had snow days, or, and since it was never marked in any of the calendars, I was a little confused as to that, how that worked, so.
Yeah, and I think it will depend on what the calendar ends up looking like. It's like last year, where it was an unusual calendar, where we actually even had one school, as you remember, that was off-cycle. We tend to look at what we've done previously, and that's what we model after. But as of right now, it's the last day of school that's an early release.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're ready to vote, having gone to the public. Ms. Pitco, the discussion around whether to move one day to the Monday, the 8th, was not adopted, so what we're voting on is the calendar as presented. With no other comments, all in favor of the calendar as presented, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. New business, approval of the collective bargaining agreement. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Fairfield School Administrators Association and the Board of Education for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli? A second? Mrs. Gerber? So, this is a personnel matter, so we don't go to the public on a personnel matter. If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Acer, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, and Mr. Peterson, all vote aye, opposed. Abstention. Ms. Pitco? Eight to one?
Eight-one.
Eight oh one, yeah. Thank you very much. The first, and for board members, you should know that this contract needs to also be ratified by the RTM, and it is our hope that we can get the processes done so that it can be on the December RTM calendar. There's no guarantee of that, but that's what our hope and goal is. First quarter financial report, Mrs. Muncell. First quarter financial report, Mrs. Munsell.
Welcome, new board members. I'm just going to give you highlights of the report, which is enclosure two. I have to say, I think this is the, I know this is the first time in my career that I had a first quarter, close a first quarter of the financial, of the fiscal year without a state budget. That was certainly notable. And, you, some of you will remember that in the spring, we discussed, because of that situation, we discussed reserving $2.3 million of the budget because of the uncertainty in the, in the state funding. Just as a refresher, the 1.2 million was the difference between what the governor was proposing as a special ed grant and what we traditionally knew as excess cost. There was also talk about residential cost for state agency placements that we hadn't incurred before, and then there was a small adjustment in the pension, so that's where the $2.3 million came from. We actually also discussed in, in the spring that I would move that money into an actual reserve, and you'll see it in the report under summer, support expenses. It's in summary object 307, other services. So, that's where the money was moved, and that's where it remains right now. Just as a follow-up to the state funding, they did pass the budget October 31st, but they have also subsequently announced holdbacks. So, there's, you know, this seems to be an ongoing situation. The, as another highlight, there's staffing changes in here, in the report, just mostly just what we added. The net effect was an additional 1.15 certified and 12.5 non-certified. The non-certified was nearly all for special ed costs, special ed positions. We've also had changes in health insurance, also because of the state situation. There was a Cback agreement with the state employee health plan, and since we're with the Connecticut Partnership Plan, which is related to that plan, we were offered the Cback, same Cback changes effective 10-1, which we opted to, to, to accept, and there will be savings associated with that, but you'll notice in the report, at this point in time, it's too early in the year to do any projections, so there's, there's no projections on any costs whatsoever. Also, for transportation, first stu-, excuse me, first student did an efficiency study for us, and as a result, we were able to eliminate two buses. We, we eliminated a three-tier and a two-tier bus, had to increase another bus, but that, the net savings from that was about $127,000. And then we were also able to not use a bus that we, an additional bus that we had budgeted. So, in total, it's approximately $200,000 savings in transportation. So, those are the highlights of the report. Take questions?
Questions from the board on the financial report. As you know, this was presented to the Board of Finance earlier, since their meeting just slightly preceded our meeting. Mr. Peterson.
I'm sorry, I have a fairly newbie sort of question, I hope you'll bear with me. Draw your attention to the, to line 311, utility services. I know that in the description, you say obviously that it's difficult to project these accurately. The one thing that kind of caught my attention was that we're kind of 30% through the, 30% encumbered at least, through the first quarter. And I, my, I don't have a good sense of how that, that runs. I understand, if I'm not mistaken, that the solar panels, for example, at, at the high schools were not operational in the first, first quarter, over the summer.
Ah, correct.
So, I, I guess, my basic question is, this seems, I would have thought that utility usage would have been, would have been much heavier in the winter rather than the summer. So, I, I was looking for a sense whether this is on track, or whether this is a larger to-date usage.
No, as far as I know, we're on track. We, you know, there is a lapse in, in time, like for July, we wouldn't, we have an unbelievable number of invoices, even just for one building, say your electric bill. We have a different meter, so, I mean, we may have five different invoices for, for one building. So, they tend, there tends to be a lapse in, you know, by the end of the month, when they close the, the billing period, and that by the time we get them, and then by the time we vet them and pay them, there's probably a little bit of lag of time in there.
Right. But, in, in general, this is, this is not an odd sort of percentage number for having only been through one quarter of the year.
No.
All right, this is my basic question, thank you.
Other questions from board members? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mrs. Munsell. Item 7C, discussion and possible action on options for the Ad-Hoc Committee on Operational Effectiveness. As I was reviewing the results of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and as, in support of this, if you will, is the most recently updated memo from Dr. Jones that outlines the initial two meetings of brainstorming ideas that then the superintendent and her staff reviewed and tried to put them in some semblance of order as to what, in her mind, were structural changes that would warrant follow-up. What were ideas that perhaps could be utilized, if needed, to bring a budget in that was fiscally responsible next year? And what ideas were not recommended for a variety of reasons, that they required union negotiation, or the state law doesn't permit, et cetera, et cetera. So, as I was looking at this, a couple of things came forward. One, that four new board members are here that did not weigh in on the formulation of the original committee, which was approved on an eight-to-one vote. So, that effectively means that five members of this board, including the one who did not vote for it to begin with, did not have a chance to say, is this the right approach? And subsequent to our forming the committee, other board members expressed that they read the document one way, and maybe I was thinking of it another way, and so it was clear to me that, that the board ought to weigh in as to what they wish to do going forward. And so, it's on the agenda, there's not a recommended motion, because it's not clear to me what the board will want to do based on that conversation. So, if there's somebody at the table who has a very clear idea of what they think ought to happen, perhaps that individual, after some discussion, should be ready to put a motion on the table. At the moment, I have made inquiries with three different board members to have them replace the existing members who resigned and have only gotten one definitive answer. So, if you do nothing, the committee still can't move forward unless three members of this board sit on it, because our bylaws require three members of the board to sit on it. You, I would think that one of the things that you could do is, because most of the conversations seem to be, at least in my mind, on the makeup of the committee in the membership section. You could strip out that section and just say, the committee is made up of three people, and under those circumstances, three of you say, okay, I'll join it. I would hesitate going to four and certainly not five, because if you went to five, you'd essentially be creating an official Board of Education meeting, because you'd have a quorum. If you go to four, you risk one board member showing up out of interest, and you've created a five-person committee. So, I think the logic of three people allows a little bit of room there as well. So, that's all I have for background information, and I open it up to the board for comments and, and questions. Mr. Asa, followed by Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I think, being that I was the one person that voted against it, it's probably pretty, pretty clear my choice here. But my suggestion would be to start fresh and disband this committee. And, I would put it out there that if a finance subcommittee is formed, in the, at the future meeting with the bylaws change, that that committee could handle these tasks and go through various means of gathering input from the public, from other town bodies and whatnot. So, that would be my suggestion. And, I think at this point, the committee as it is now, doesn't have clear goals. I understand the intention of it, I just think that it failed from the start, and we have a new board here, and I will go with what the majority of the board thinks, but I think it's time to start fresh.
Mrs. Gerber.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Asa. I, I think, I mean, I did vote in favor, well, first I voted in favor of Mrs. Max and Cunnelli's amendment, which didn't pass, and then I did vote in favor of the, the formation of the, of the Ad-Hoc Committee, as it was approved by the board. But having seen just the way, the direction that things were going in, it was very clear to me, for a number of reasons, that this particular formation was not going to work. Unfortunately, any chance, at least as far as I can tell, any chance that we have of having any real impact for any committee for the upcoming budget that we'll be reviewing in a little over a month, i- is not going to happen regardless. So, I think the best thing to do would be to start with a board committee and have it be a standing committee, because sadly, I think this is going to be an issue we're going to be facing for some time, so, as opposed to just having it be an, an ad hoc Board of Ed committee.
Other comments from board members? Mrs. Leeper?
I suspect I'm the one board member who got back to you and proposed what Mr. Asa said. I think that making it a permanent subcommittee of the board is the right direction, I think a fresh start. Hopefully, we'll build trust back with the town that we're taking a new approach, and, yeah, I think that is the best direction to go.
Any other comments? Mr. Peterson.
Well, just briefly to, to, to touch on what Ms. Leeper said. When we talk about disbanding something, I think that, that sometimes sounds like it's a, it's a major leap, but my, my sense in talking to people on this board and people around town, and people who've been involved in the Ad-Hoc Committee, is that everyone is very interested in the work and the ideas behind, behind this committee, and we just want to work hard to find the correct structure for it. So, I mean, I just, I can only speak for myself, obviously, but I, I have been interested in this committee and its goals from the, from the beginning, and I hope that kind of a tighter focus, but something that's not necessarily trying to get up to speed to impact this particular budget season. If we take our time with it, if we make sure that we, you know, are, listen carefully to the public, I, I think it can be more successful in the long run.
Final comments? Any other comments? Mrs. Vitale.
I concur with my fellow board members. I think that, right now, we should disband this committee as it's formally set up. My feelings on it really haven't changed, while I appreciate the work needs to be done. I think the intent was very good. I, looking at the commission statement, it's very broad, and I think that the work really can be split up possibly into two committees. Finance committee, and in the past, the board has had a standing committee for long-term facilities, because a lot of the work would require input from the public. A lot of the work, in my opinion, really belongs with the staff and should be done by the superintendent, administration, with, with, you know, input from the teachers. And I would like to see more of that done, have the staff come back to the board with some ideas and take it from there. Thank you, though.
Ms. Pitco.
I do want to echo that I agree with all of my colleagues here on the board, that I believe it needs to be disbanded, and three Board of Ed members take it on as a finance committee, with public input sought out, and central office staff.
I'll, I'll make some comments. I don't disagree with the board, but I would like to make some comments, and perhaps when I've finished, one of you will have fashioned a motion that you can move forward, okay? Whoever wishes to do that. Maybe the first person who spoke up. I didn't want to, I, I never out a board member, but yes, Mrs., Ms. Leeper was the one who first suggested it to me. However we approach this, we are one town, and every time we go to the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance or the RTM, the Board of Ed is reminded of that. These will not be easy decisions. And so, however we structure the initial committee, a three-person Board of Ed committee, a serious effort, I believe, will have to be made to get buy-in from various town boards and commissions and the public if we're going to address some of the issues that are out in front of us. Those of us who remember the last redistricting conversation knows that it was very difficult. And if we're going to engage in that again, the finance committee, if that's what we create and vest with this issue, is going to have to do a very good job of engaging the community so that we get buy-in. My only concern about, I'll say, putting it into a finance committee is my feeble attempt to say what, who, you're, as a volunteer board member or committee member, you owe a duty of loyalty to the institution on which committee you serve. My point of saying that is, this committee owes a responsibility to 10,000 students to act in the best interest of 10,000 students, which includes consideration of the programmatic impacts, not just the financial impacts. Some of us might say, well, let's deal with the finances and make sure it doesn't impact program. My orientation is to say, let's make sure it doesn't impact program, and then see where we can become more efficient. Both have to be, it's a balance between the two, so I would hope that the eventual committee strikes that balance between financial impact and programmatic impact. Have I talked long enough to get a motion written? Are you making the motion? So, have you got a motion written? Because it would be good to at least put a motion on the table.
Can I make a comment before the motion is said? Because there's a reason for it.
Please do.
And that, my only hesitation is, is that if, if for any reason, I don't like the idea of disbanding the committee before we have the bylaw change. So, my preference would have been to hold on any motion to disband until we know that we're going to have a subcommittee, we have a description, I mean, we're talking about the goals of this committee aren't clear enough, and yet we're saying, but we're just going to start up a new committee. To, to do what? There is no charge yet for what's the descrip-, I mean, policy committee, we know what the policy committee does, but exactly what the job description would be of this new subcommittee, we have no idea. We have two people who have volunteered to script it, but, and it's not that I don't have faith that that would happen, but before we disband anything, I would like to see what are the clearly articulated goals of a new, you know, bylaw change and what that subcommittee would be. We can talk about finance, but then again, we have an ad hoc committee right now that's focused on operational offici-, I don't remember the full title, but, so, my, my only hesitation for voting this, I've, I've always believed in the committee. Obviously, I believed in how I wanted to amend the committee. I think the work is important, I think the input is vital, but my hesitation with disbanding right now is that there is the promise of something with not one detail. And so, my preference would be to hold on the formal disbanding until our next meeting, which I would assume would take place after we have had a bylaw change. And also, for the record, Mr. Dwyer, I did write you an email offering to serve on the committee.
But I don't out board members.
That, that's fine, but I just, as, as Mrs. Leeper outed herself, so shall I. So, again, my, my, my point being, I would prefer to hold on the motion.
There is a scheduled, I agree with that, but there, there is a scheduled meeting on the 6th. I have no problem notifying them that it is the intent of the board to disband the committee and take this up at the meeting on the 12th, assuming that Mr. Asa does his homework, and we have something that the board wants to act on, and then act on both at the same time. What is the wish of the board from Mrs. Max and Cunnelli's comment? Mr. Asa?
I, I understand where Ms. Max and Cunnelli's coming from. However, we don't have a committee. It- It is in disarray. We don't have enough members to even have the next meeting. So that's my point. I say end it now, and let's make a concerted effort on all of our part as a board to make sure that we come up with a plan, a new plan, whether it be next meeting or the meeting thereafter, to tackle these issues. But I would argue the fact that we have a committee because we don't.
Okay. So I would suggest, Mrs. Leeper, that you put the motion on the table, and then the vote will determine whether we ought to move forward or slow down. Do you have a motion?
Sure. That the Board of Education moves to disband the existing ad hoc committee and replace it with the reinstatement of a permanent finance and facilities subcommittee?
How about just disband the committee?
Oh, sure. That's much easier. Sure, that the Board of Education moves to disband the existing ad hoc committee.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for that, Mr. Asa? And I think the board members know that to forecast what we might do in a bylaw change probably does not make sense to be part of this motion. Any further discussion on that question? Any further discussion on that question? If not, are you, okay. Out to the public, does any member of the public wish to speak on this topic? And even though you might have spoken before on this topic, since there was no motion on the table, you would be eligible to speak again if you so desired. Please state your name and address.
Susie, Musco, 123 Rygate Road. I am excited to hear we're going to disband something that probably shouldn't have been formed in the first place. Having listened to the Board of Finance meeting, I sympathize with what you're all up against. I have to say that I like one of the recommendations of one of your members, which is to separate what is deemed now finance from facilities. I would truly hope that finance would be more than just looking at the financial ramifications, but looking at things that you can start presenting to outside boards, showing changes that you can make that don't affect the education of our children, but could be making cost-effective means. I think the superintendent is a good place to start. I agree with the board member who sent that. She's found a lot of efficiencies, just in what you've even heard this evening. So I think the direction that the superintendent's taking the board and the district is in the right lines. I think what the other boards of the town are looking to hear is the cost analysis that goes with whatever efficiencies that you find. But please don't make it finance and facilities as one. I think it really needs to be separated. You're going to need clean eyes for both sets. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to come forward on the motion to disband the ad hoc committee? Seeing nobody, back to the board. Any further questions? If not, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of, go ahead.
I also volunteered to be on this committee. So I, in full disclosure, I think that if Ms. Maxon Cannelly also volunteered, we do have three that the board could elect to also have one last meeting of this committee and, you know, vote to disband and issue a final report to the board. And then we can truly take a fresh start by disbanding and deciding where we're going to go with the standing committee and what the mission of those one or two committees might be.
All of my board members' statements are correct. I might have been forecasting the level of enthusiasm of an offer, which I didn't have three people who enthusiastically said, we ought to keep going. So that's why I put it on the agenda. And clearly, from the board discussion, it seems as though the newly constituted board is clear as to what they wish to do. With no other comments, all in favor of disbanding, do you want to read the official motion?
The motion is to disband the existing ad hoc committee on operational effectiveness.
Okay, thank you. Everybody understand the motion as presented? All in favor, please raise your hand. I'll make it unanimous out of courtesy to the wisdom of my total board. There is the report from Dr. Jones, which I presume will form at least the beginning of information for whatever committee this ends up in. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
I apologize, but since you earlier, and I know this is way, way early, but since we're now already disbanding a committee in favor of a committee that has no goals or no members, to Mr. Asa's point, would it be possible, since you during the organizational meeting requested from people committee and liaison positions, would there also be the possibility for people responding to you tentatively with their interest in membership for the as-yet unformed, unmembered subcommittees?
Certainly, I would extend to any board member that if you want to take a leap of faith as to what this committee is going to be able to accomplish, let me know, okay? Approval of the minutes, item number eight. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 10, 2017. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco? Any questions? Comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 10, 2017 be approved? Please raise your hand.
I wasn't here.
Now, custom in Fairfield is to not vote on minutes that you were not at a meeting. Robert's Rules does not require that, just so that you know. Anybody can vote on minutes whether you were at the meeting or even on the board. But custom has said that we don't generally do that. Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, I assume nobody's opposed abstentions? If you didn't vote, it's good to say you abstained.
I did, oh, I did vote.
Oh, you did vote?
She voted, yeah.
Okay, I only saw one hand quickly, sorry. Abstentions, Mrs. Jacobson and Mr. Peterson. Thank you very much. 701 and 2. And the minutes of the special meeting that the Board of Education approve, the minutes of the special meeting of October 24, 2017. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitco. No comments? All in favor of the minutes? Please raise your hand. Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Leeper, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. I assume no opposed abstentions? Mrs. Jacobson and Mr. Peterson. 702.
It's Mrs. Leeper.
It says Ms., and so that's what I'm confused with. That's what your choice was.
That was my choice.
Then that's what I will do.
Wow.
As board members know, I always prefer to just go with first name, but our custom has been more formal. Superintendent's report, discussion of the 1819 selected budget drivers. Dr. Jones?
I'll just hit a couple of things before we discuss the budget driver. The alumni Thanksgiving Day, I think, went off without a hitch. I know some of you may have been able to attend, but great feedback for that football game and some really excellent pictures of Ward and Ludlow cheerleaders dance coming together. Also, the Halloween Parade, I was able to attend that with several of our senior leadership at Fairfield Ward, and that was, that was my first time. It was very exciting to see all the students dressed up. International Day at McKinley was excellent, really an amazing event and very, very good turnout. I had no idea they actually served all of that food, so I ate before I went there. I just didn't realize, but it was a fantastic event. I also just want to commend all of our school sites that honored our veterans. I was able to make several of the Veterans Day ceremonies because they did them on different days, but just a great, great tribute. And a special thanks to Tom Quinn, who went to as many of those as he could. I think I saw him at almost every single one that I attended, so, and just, it was great to have his presence there. And I also want to just thank the PTA who did sponsor the opioid parent information. Our student commented about it from the student perspective, but the parent seminar that evening was really, really well-done and very, very informational. And I also just want to take this time to say thanks to the instructional team. A few of them are still here. They worked many, many hours to take, you know, data from 10,000 students and try to get that to as concise as it was, just to be able to share with the great work that they're doing. So thank you to all of them. I'll just point out on the memo, some of the expected large budget focus areas and cost estimates. We are hard at work on the budget to be presented in January, and there really are four big items on the list right now. These numbers are meant to be estimates. They're not specific when you look at the dollar amounts associated. So one of the first things on the 1A is the high school intensive model. And this is just going to be a line item shift, but because it is a larger number, I just want to make sure the board is aware. This is, was originally about 600,000, that was three years ago, showed up in the tuition line. Then we moved that to a consultant line. This year it will be moved where it'll be more in a staffing program. And so we're doing a lot of work there to develop the intensive model for the high school. Also, the CLCS at Riverfield, this is something we've been working on over the last year, planning and preparing for. This is a complex learner cohort for students who have social, emotional needs. And this has been a request from all of our elementary team, something that we really need so that we can keep our children with us and program for them in the district in an appropriate setting. And also at Tomlinson Middle School, our numbers are requiring us to add another CLC, which we're excited about the numbers in that this will complete the feeder pattern. So we'll actually have a CLC at each one of our middle schools, which is also very positive for us. So that's another program you'll see in the budget coming forward. We talked a little bit about it tonight, science grades nine through 12. Looking at those course and materials, we are, you'll see a number right around a half a million dollars, $500,000 in the budget to get those materials. And also, you'll see health insurance. We've had a lot of discussion about health insurance just over the last two years. The change this year, that happened on October 1. Going into next year, right now, we expect the increase to be between seven and seven and a half percent. Now, the number you see here is probably larger because that's just the benefits number. Some of those benefits will go up, some will come down. Hopefully, this number comes down a bit. Transportation, as you know, we are negotiating a new contract right now. This number is so much better than we thought it was going to be just a matter of weeks ago. Originally, we were told to expect double digits between, you know, that 10 and 20%. Right now, we think transportation is only going to increase between 3 and 5%. Still an increase, but that's definitely much better than we anticipated. So these are a couple of the big items that we're plugging in along with, of course, any other of those tuition increases and all the regular things that you see in the budget that we have to account for.
Questions for Superintendent, Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mr. Asa?
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Jones. So with Riverfield and the CLC, will that be the fifth elementary school with a CLC program? Jennings, Burr, Dwight, OHS?
Yes.
So again, as with the middle school situation, so the numbers have gone up enough that it warrants creating a new program in a new school as opposed to, because I know you already have Dwight that feeds into Roger Ludlow, but you would need to, you need to have an additional?
And this program is totally different. We've stayed with CLC because people understand complex learner cohort, but that S that's talking about social emotional, the paras are trained differently, we have a social worker. I mean, there's, it's a very different program than what you see in CLC. It's intensive and it's, but you couldn't pair this with one of our other programs.
So this is, so this is different from, so the four CLCs that we have are one type of program?
Yes, one model.
And then this is a separate type of program?
That's correct.
And then with Tomlinson, so again, you said the numbers have increased enough that you wouldn't be able to have, because right now Woods and Roger Ludlow have CLC programs. And so I'm assuming Tomlinson students would go to Woods since that at least feeds into Ward?
Yeah, like now?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's how that works now. But moving forward, it would be too many at Woods?
It would be too many. And the other thing, and I commend the staff, because you know we have a brand-new special education team, but our middle school coordinator, Jonathan Goodison, is also working with our families who are in out placements right now and really wanting to work with families to see if we can bring some of our students back inside the district by knowing that they could be in their home school. And we're having some positive reception there from several families that want to come back, which is what the direction we want to be moving in, is being able to keep as many of our kids in our home schools as we can. So there's that number plus just the programs that are growing.
Correct. Okay. So I guess just one thing, just a suggestion, since these are two budget drivers, you know, we talk about CLC, I mean, since I've been on the board, before I was on the board, we would talk about CLC, but I still feel like there are some aspects, details of the programs that I personally don't really understand. And I'm assuming with new board members and members of the public and members of the other town bodies who will be approving our budget, I think it would be really, really helpful to have some sort of a separate presentation or a more detailed presentation within the budget to really explain, because I think it's somewhat shrouded in mystery. And I think that it would be so helpful to really help people understand what benefits the programs provide to students. So while it's costing money, it's also saving money in some way potentially, and the idea of bringing students back in and just, I think to have more detail on that, and maybe you're already doing it for the budget, so I'm already, you know, you're ahead of me. But I just did want to mention that because I do feel that's something people will say, oh, CLC, and they'll kind of be like, oh, okay. So I just think it would be helpful to have more detail on that. So thank you.
Hi, Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Ed. You make an excellent point. The CLCS that we're proposing opening next fall at Riverfield will service a different kind of student than the other, the other CLCs in the district. So we will clearly articulate the programs, what they're set up for what students, and so you will have a clear idea of the difference.
And I might just add too, even on A, the high school intensive model, the staff overwhelmingly were ready to be here tonight, but when I knew this was at the very, just because they want the board to hear about the work they're doing in developing that program. So it may be that we could present both of these programs to the board on one of our next agendas. They would love it.
Tonight, we were, the high school staff was prepared to come out here like in high numbers because of their excitement about the presentation that we were willing to do and that we're going to be discussing during budget time.
Mr. Asa?
I have two questions. The first one goes back to the presentation earlier tonight. They mentioned the formation of a ELL Academy, like a new students. Can you elaborate, what?
Newcomer Academy.
Newcomer Academy. Can you elaborate on that a little bit on as far as a timeline and what would be involved and costs and whatnot?
It's a little bit early because we're still developing everything. We know that we're going to have enhanced services for ELL next year. We're still crunching numbers, trying to look at exactly what that's going to look like. And because we have to look at everything from logistics to space to all those different components, so we're not quite there yet.
So that's more of a wish list items right now versus?
It's not really a wish list, to be honest, because we have to have a sense of urgency around what we have available for our EL students. And right now, I mean, we have students who come to us who are literally 16 that have not been in school, and we need an intensive model. It's just this time of the year, things move so quickly as we're evaluating all of these different programs. We want to make sure we do it right. I would hope that very quickly we could have a plan.
I'm curious to hear more about that.
Yeah.
And my second question is regarding transportation. So are we going to a competitive bid process on that right now? We're up for contract renewal? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So are you being given any indication on what are the drivers of the increase since we are at a competitive bid? Why we are looking at potentially these increases? Obviously, three to five is better than 10 to 20, but 10 to 20 seems ludicrous to me when we're going out to bid.
I know there are wage increases are one of those impacts. I don't know, Ms. Menzel, if you want to come forward with anything else?
And just to clarify, when you say you are going out to bid, it's actually the town purchasing department that handles the bid and signs the contract. We just give advice as to what the scope of services should be.
So I'm just curious if there's any feedback as to what the drivers are behind that.
One of, well, two things. Both the consultant that we hired and the town purchasing director thought that it was going to be a large increase because of Affordable Care Act that wasn't in place when we went out last time. And also paid time off. I think that was another new initiative that wasn't in place when we went, went out to bid last time. So they thought that that was going to be, you know, too big. So, they thought that that was going to be, you know, two big factors, and apparently they're not as big as they thought.
It appears to be personnel expenses from the bus company.
It's a service contract.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Just one quick follow-up to Mrs. Gerber's question regarding the CLC at Riverfield. As a different model, does that mean that, to her point, that it's joining with Dwight feeding into the middle school, but in fact, this will be students from all over the district? So, they could very easily be then going to three different middle schools?
That's correct.
Okay.
Our next, you'll see, the next thing we will be tackling probably the following year is going to be the middle school, because we're doing a lot of work in high school with this number one that you're seeing, and we're doing work on the elementary. The next thing's going to be to merge that, connect the middle school.
And back to the question about the numbers about for Tomlinson, I assume that on long lines of that newcomer academy, that it is not a good idea to try to have that in one location, that having it in the three locations is serving the district well at this point with the three middle schools.
Absolutely, and we have parents that really want their children to be in their home school and be with their brothers and sisters and friends and be in their neighborhood school.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Any other questions from board members? Mrs. Jacobson.
Just one more on the transportation. Is that assumption based on maintaining the exact same number of buses?
This number, and again, just keep in mind, they're estimates. It's really looking at how much do we have paying transportation in the budget that was approved this year, and then what would that three to five percent increase be?
If it was the same.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Vettaly.
I have one more question about the CLC. Since this is going to be populated with students that are currently in other CLCs, or no? So, these have been newly... Okay.
Yeah.
If no further questions, thank you very much. Move on to committee and liaison reports. Ms. Pitco, and then Mr. Asa.
I just wanted to mention, SEPTA has a meeting tomorrow night, the 29th, at 7:30 at McKinley School. Rehab Associates is going to be presenting their caregiver course, and some of the students of that course are going to come and speak about it. So, if anybody wants to come out and see that.
Mr. Asa.
Just an update regarding Holland Hill. They continue to get various approvals from town bodies, and they're going through that process, planning and zoning, building department, et cetera. Plans have been generated to reposition the portables so that construction can begin in March, and the plan is for bidding in January and February and shovel in the ground in March.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Two different committees to report on. First, regarding PTA Council. Actually, a couple of exciting things at this last PTA Council meeting that I would be remiss if I didn't bring up. First of all, PTA Council also sponsored an opioid talk in terms of the epidemic with Ginger Cats, which I understand that Chief of Police McNamara was there, and that those who were in attendance really found it a valuable presentation. So, I think it's a tribute to how the town is taking this so seriously, because the town has been impacted by this. A few other things, that PTA Council is looking to build a new website that works well, is user-friendly and is up to date, and they came up with what I think was a great idea of that they are going out to the two high schools to get some of the students to help build that platform. At first, there was some talk in PTA Council making a competition between the two high schools, and then the talk evolved to being a little bit more collaborative, but just a really great idea that they're doing. And then finally, I keep bringing up the issue with PTA Council of the grants that they have available and two awards that they did at this last meeting that were especially noteworthy. First of all, we have had a number of our elementary schools, in this time it was Burr and Riverfield, whose holiday outreach to an elementary school in Bridgeport, the PTA Council is supporting. And it just, you know, I so commend those elementary schools for doing that, because I know that Bridgeport, of course, has been hit so hard with these budget cuts and that this was a really wonderful way that those kids are doing some community service. And then there was also, if you recall from last year, there was that meeting, which I actually didn't realize this had a formal name, this Achievement Gap Task Force Committee, started at Ward. Last year, they brought together, I believe it was Central High School from Bridgeport, Ludlow and Ward over at Ludlow for really a very challenging and outstanding talk about diversity that everyone in attendance spoke so highly of, and that group is continuing. And so, they have achieved, been granted money by PTA Council for two efforts of theirs, one of which is another meeting here in Connecticut, which actually I believe Southern has offered to sponsor. They'll be going up there again with Ward, Ludlow, as well as another Bridgeport school, perhaps extending the outreach to continue this conversation in terms of achievement gap and all of the issues that many of our students deal with. Additionally, they have been invited to participate in a conference out in California, I believe, I think it was San Diego. And so, this group of students and staff will be heading out there, and it's just they're really enthusiastic about this topic, and I'm trying to get some more information about it. I've been a little bit slow about that, but just, you know, wonderful work and so glad that PTA Council could support them. Separately, regarding policy, I had just wanted to give the board a heads-up that I'd be reaching out to you, that the Board of Ed Handbook that you received at orientation, this is something that Ms. Dwyer and I have been waiting to get new input on, that came out of, was generated first from Mr. Dwyer and then was fine-tuned over the course of several meetings in policy. It absolutely is in need of updating if it is an item of value. And before policy took that on, I'd asked Mr. Dwyer, and he suggested I just wait until now to bring that up to the board, that if you could, again, I'll be reaching out to you to seek this input, because obviously, going through a document as long as that was is well worth it if it is of value to new members. So, just wanted to give you the heads-up that I would be reaching out to you on that. And then some upcoming issues that we're working on, we will be tackling graduation requirements, something in the immediate, and then a real focus this spring as we work with staff on that, and then, as you may have read in the paper, taking a look at political activities, and that we hope to have that as a policy to you in December for a first read. Thank you.
Anybody else? Open board comment? Any comments for the greater good? Mr. Asa.
Two things. First, I'd like to say I'm really excited to work with the board for the next year and beyond. And Dr. Jones mentioned a gentleman, Tom Quinn, earlier tonight. Tom is a phenomenal citizen of Fairfield, who is currently chairing the Holland Hill Building Committee, chaired the Riverfield Committee, and has been involved with so many things in town. And I just wanted to make mention that it was just announced that he is going to be part of, invited to the 2017 class of the Connecticut Veterans Hall of Fame. And there is a ceremony on Monday, December 4 in Hartford, at the Legislative Office Building in the atrium. It's Monday, December 4 at 5:00 PM. If anyone is available or up in that area or works up there, it would be great to go and show your support for this very prestigious honor. Thank you.
Other open board comments? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind board members, just because it will only be two days away when we have our next Board of Ed meeting that we are having, a town hall meeting on Thursday, December 14. I know that Ms. Pitco has a work commitment that she can't make it, but I hope the rest of you will be there at 7:30 PM here, and it will be moderated by our former Board of Ed Chair Pam Maicono. And also, I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to thank Dr. Jones for making the change here with the budget calendar that we have here with the Board of Ed meeting dates and the first four of our budget meetings. I really appreciate her being willing to change this. I just was concerned with the initial schedule that we weren't going to have enough time, especially with so many new board members, to really have time to review the budget in detail, and so I do appreciate that. And I apologize in advance to any staff who are going to have to put in late nights to get it ready by January 9, but I do think at the end it will be the best thing possible to have as much time for the board to review that. And then just one other question here. We have this handout that we got here, the summary of Board of Ed topics.
I'm just going to cover that.
Okay. Is this going to be posted online?
No.
Can it be posted online?
I'm just going to cover that.
Okay.
The meeting dates is showing draft over it, and so, assuming that there are no other comments from board members on the projected meeting dates, the word "draft" will be taken off, and those meeting dates will be sent to the town clerk and will form the official meeting dates of the Board of Education for 2018. In the packet that you had in front of you was the document that Mrs. Gerber took note The reason I hesitate to quote "post it online" is that this is a very dynamic document. It changes all the time, and so there's no guarantee that the topic that is shown there will actually show up at this particular meeting date, because something else might bump it off, or staff might not be quite ready to present on that particular date. And so, I would hesitate to post this online because of those two reasons. It really is presented to you so that you'll know, here are the topics that, at the moment, it appears we'll be dealing with. And if you have a topic or an agenda item that you think is important that you don't see listed here, as I said during the orientation session, talk with a couple of board members to see if there's general support to put that on an agenda and spend some time on it, and we'll try and fit it into a time period. And so, I'm a little hesitant to post it. This really is for Board of Education members to kind of help understand the planning for the year. So, that's what its purpose is. Yes.
Yeah, well, I would just say, I mean, we could certainly, and at the end of the day, I guess it's your decision, but, you know, I think we could put subject to change, but I do think it's helpful, because there are people out there who are interested in specific topics, and so if they have this full school year schedule, they can at least plan accordingly or keep an eye out for agendas and, you know, make a note to watch fair TV. I just think sometimes things will sneak up on people, and if they have a sense, okay, some point in March or April, we're going to be getting the science curriculum presentation, or at some point in the next couple of months, we'll be seeing this. I just think it would be helpful for the public to have a general sense, and we could certainly make it very clear that this is not written in stone and that it is subject to change. But I just know people like to get a heads-up, because by the time the agenda comes out, it's only a few days in advance of our meetings, and, you know, sometimes people might miss out in watching or coming to the meetings.
Thank you. Any other open board comment? Hearing none, public comment? Any member of the public wish to come forward and speak on an agenda item? And if so, please come forward and do so. State your name and address.
Citizen Mark Patton, 84, Dalewood Avenue, Fairfield. At the discretion of the chair, since I was, I know I can't address individual board members, this is not exactly an agenda item, but I would like to say a few final words.
I'll give you some latitude, certainly as a former board member.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I didn't say a certain amount of time. I just said some latitude.
You can watch the clock. So, being a member of the Board of Education is not an easy task. It's certainly not as simple as having a strong opinion on education and a desire to express it, although it might look that way on TV or in the newspapers. During my last four years as a board member, I learned a great many things about our educational program and the inner workings of our school system. I've learned that listening is often smarter than voicing your opinion, and that many times, speaking less can actually do more. I've learned that much of the real work happens behind the scenes, and that having a good relationship with the people that you work with can allow you to get more done in shorter periods of time. I've learned that arguing solves nothing, and stubbornness only leads to isolation. Compromise is truly an art form when you have nine people with nine different personalities involved in a conversation. Most of all, I've learned that working together with students, parents and staff are ultimately the best way to make the smartest decisions that will benefit the most people. I participated in discussions and approvals on new curriculums, dozens of new policies, hiring a new superintendent, vetting employment contracts, many large school renovations, and of course, the behemoth that became the Fairfield School District Improvement Plan. It's a thrill that warms my heart to see that, according to the data that was presented tonight, that the last three years saw most areas of student improvement and growth in all grades, and that's kind of what we're here for, right? So, I'd like to thank the staff, and Dr. Jones, and Dr. Tyler, your predecessor, for their patience, hard work and dedication to our students. Thank you to all the teachers that I've had the pleasure of meeting and speaking with over the years. Your opinions matter. They really matter, trust me. And finally, thank you to my fellow board members. I will use first names. Phil, Jessica, Jennifer, Tricia, Nick, John, Anthony, Paul, Donna, Eileen and John. You've taught me a lot, and I hope I've done the same for each of you. Good luck to those of you continuing on the board and to those that have moved on. I want to offer my sincerest and most heartfelt congratulations to Fairfield's newest Board of Ed members, Jennifer, Jen, Christine and Jeff. I couldn't be prouder of you guys. You'll be incredible Board of Education members, and I believe that each of you know that this is no easy job and will do your best to help our staff improve our excellent education system. So, my simple advice is to learn and listen as much as you can. Things move fast and get complicated faster than you can imagine. Understand that the perspective of others and respect what they have to say as individuals, but always be true to yourself, and after you've understood the facts, vote with your heart. Remember, no matter what the issue, you are here to advocate for each and every one of Fairfield's 10,000 students at every school in every district, so try not to play favorites. Work with and get to know Dr. Jones and her staff and help them succeed. They do the real work in our school district. And lastly, do great things and build from where we are today so that the Fairfield Public School System remains one of the finest in the country. After all, it's the reason why we moved here and all got involved. Good luck. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our town and its students, and I bid you farewell.
Thank you very much for your service, and I'll declare that that was exactly three minutes. One comment. We surveyed the board, and December 6, we will need a special meeting to hear and consider the para contract. We got the most number of yeses for that date. 7:00 PM, does that work for everybody? Some people couldn't get here until after 6:15. 7:00 PM, does that work? You'll get a notice about it, but I just wanted to check. With no other comments, any other member of the public wish to come forward? No? Okay. So, I need a motion for adjournment. Ms. Pitco, certified by Mrs. Gerber, please raise your hand. All in favor, say aye. It's...
Jen. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay. 9-0. Thank you.